Okay.
Sorry, guys.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone to the City Council Regular Session Meeting for March 19th, 2020. We'll start the meeting with the prayer by Farrell Alexander and the pledge by Nick Foster.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you so much for all that you've done for us. We thank you, Father, for your ability to be here and be able to meet. Father, we just want to certainly first off lift up to you the situation that we find our world in right now. We're experiencing it, and so it's really coming home to us. But Father, we just know that you're in absolute control, and we know that you can help rebate and remove this, Father, if you will. We pray, Father, that just there would be no lives lost, and we pray that all of us will remain healthy. And I just pray your hand of protection on all of us here and those that represent in our wonderful city. Pray, Father, just give us wisdom and judgment in what we do tonight. I pray that everything that we do will ultimately glorify you and make a difference in our community and to make it a better place. We love you. We give you praise and glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move to Mayor's comments. I want to, of course, talk about the COVID-19 pandemic, the safety of the public and the public health and welfare of the city of Glade Water Paramount Port in Stow, Iowa. How we address the COVID-19 pandemic is through a very fluid process. I want to assure the citizens, Glade Water, the city leadership, and staff continue to monitor this situation through both meetings and conference calls with state and county officials. Some of this is occurring on a daily basis. City staff will meet at the very least weekly to discuss, address, and implement any needed changes for the protection and safety of its citizens during this pandemic. City operations may also be adjusted. We'll update citizens as these changes are made through the city website, social media, and the Glade Water Mirror. For those that have friends and family without these resources, we ask that you please share any messages and new information. We must address this pandemic as community team. As most of you are aware, Governor Abbott has signed an executive order relating to COVID-19. This order is effective on midnight, March 20th, and continues through midnight, April 3rd. I will not read the executive order in its entirety. However, I will review the four orders contained within and the paragraph which follows. These four orders are designed to help mitigate the spread of COVID-19. Order number one, in accordance with the guidelines from the President and the CDC, every person in Texas shall avoid social gatherings in groups of ten, of more than 10 people. Order number two, in accordance with the guidelines from the President and the CDC, people shall avoid eating or drinking at bars, restaurants, and food courts, or visiting gyms or massage parlors. However, the use of drive-through, pickup, or delivery options is allowed and highly encouraged throughout the limited duration of this executive order. Order number three, in accordance with the guidelines from the President and CDC, people shall not visit nursing homes, or retirement or long-term care facilities unless to provide critical assistance. Order number four, in accordance with the guidelines from the President and the CDC, schools shall temporarily close. Governor Abbott continues, "This executive order does not prohibit people from visiting a variety of places such as grocery stores, gas stations, parks, and banks, so long as the necessary precautions are maintained to reduce the transmission of COVID-19. This executive order does not mandate sheltering in place. All critical infrastructure will remain operational, domestic travel will remain unrestricted, and government entities and businesses will continue providing essential services. For offices and workplaces that remain open, employees should practice good hygiene and, where feasible, work from home in order to achieve optimum isolation from COVID-19." The more people that, the more that people reduce their public contact, the sooner COVID-19 will be contained, and the sooner this executive order will expire. I participated in a conference call for mayors and judges with Governor Abbott yesterday at 5:00 PM, and I'd like to share some comments made during this call and some of my thoughts as they relate to Order Two, specifically the restaurants. Governor Abbott stated that restaurant closings are something that he would like to ultimately avoid. He feels that restaurants are as important as grocery stores in providing meals for residents. He also stated that restaurants and grocery stores have different suppliers. So as you can see by the order, restaurants offering drive-through, pickup, and delivery options are not being asked closed. So as I mentioned earlier, we've got to address this as a community team. So I'm going to ask that all citizens of Glade Water patronize our local restaurants through drive-through, pickup, and delivery services. This will provide for better available stock at our grocery store, and this will also keep our local restaurants in business during this pandemic. So I highly encourage our citizens to take advantage of these new options available. Some restaurants in our community have always offered drive-through or delivery. Some of our restaurants in our community are looking at these options to be made available. So please do consider that option during this pandemic. I'd also like to report that the Manahouse Board met this morning and voted to maintain the hours as posted for now. However, the closed closet has closed and stopped receiving donations. If you would like to learn more about how to donate, contact Suzanne Bardwell at the Mirror for more information. There's quite a bit of information that needs to be shared. We do have a COVID-19 link on our website. We will be expanding the available information on the site through our social media pages and through our social media partners such as the Mirror. I will be appointing a committee to accumulate information on various topics and provide access to this information through those sources. This information will consist of topics such as a listing of local restaurants with the drive-through, pickup, and delivery options, information for local businesses such as the SBA Disaster Assistance Loan Program, event postponements, and any other information deemed appropriate during this pandemic. We will plan and act in such a way that others that follow us not learn, will not learn from our failure, but through our success in the handling of this pandemic, and that success is in mitigating and moving beyond. And now we move on.
Just want to kind of echo some of that stuff on there. As far as the city itself, we are taking the steps and recommendations of the CDC on the cleanliness and trying to take care of our employees that way. Kind of moving on to that, one of the big topics that's coming into our area is the census time. I know under these circumstances, we don't think about it, but the census is coming out. You may be getting the notices, the pamphlets, and stuff to start filling out the information. As you do that, during these crisis, is where some of that funds comes from. So please fill that documentation out and resubmit it because that does help us through these events as well as other funding events for the city as well. Moving to some of our projects, the waterline project that we've been working on, the crews are back in town making their final service connections. We are scheduled right now, as of this afternoon, we are scheduled for next Tuesday to make the final large tie-in. This will be on East Lake where they're making the tie-in. This will affect a section. We'll be putting it out tomorrow to the area that'll be affected, but it'll be over on West Lake Side, between West Lake and Gay in there. Be about thirty, thirty or so homes in there. We've got to shut that water off to make that, that connection. While we're doing that, we're also going to be working on a leak that the city had from back in November when all them lines broke and stuff. We still got one that is leaking over there that's a deep line that's affected in here. We also have a fire hydrant over there we're going to replace. So we're going to have three different crews working this simultaneously. We're planning on this to be around a six-hour or less project. So from the water turning off, shouldn't be more than six hours in that area. So we will get it as short as possible, but they're, we're just trying to give us a big enough window to make it happen. All the crews are lined out. Like I said, the contract crew will be doing East Lake. City crews will be doing the leak, and we've got another crew that's coming in, a third party that'll be doing the fire hydrant. The intake structure that we have worked on, we have held that time start a little bit further out dealing with all this. We didn't want to be an accidental shut-in for a long period, so we have slid that out just a little bit further. It's my big issue there on this. Wastewater Plant Project is moving forward. The building is up, the belt press is in. They have started demoing some of the pumps out and stuff now, so that is starting to get done. We've done some redesign of some of the drainage issues out there. So that is moving forward. Hopefully contractors are still staying on job. They are taking these precautions as well on the site. They are testing everybody that comes through for temperature and stuff, so that is being monitored as they come in the gates or to the facility to work. So that is moving forward there. Some of the stuff that is coming forward in the future that we've been working on for a while is the onboarding for, I don't know, we're going to be talking about it a little bit more here in a little bit, but for the new council and new board members coming on, the onboarding process, documentation will be at the next meeting that we have, hopefully to be presented for y'all to take care of that. As we know here in the office, the tax office back here in the back has been closed. The only office that the tax office has now open is in the courthouse. So anybody that's looking for the city or county taxes or registration for vehicles will have to go to the Gregg County Courthouse to get that done. So they're no longer, they will be closed until further notice of this changing. So another closing or shutdown that we're having is the Longview Animal Control is halted receiving any of the animals unless they're a bite or an injury type deal there that the PD will be assessing there to take in. So that has been restricted out. Along with that has been restrictions on the jail. So the PD has made alternate accommodations to take care of that and still moving forward in our control there. But we just want to kind of give some ideals that are out there. City public restrooms, we have closed all the public restrooms out in the parks and stuff. Parks are still remaining open as that proclamation came out from the governor, but the park restrooms are closed. Court, we will not be having trial dates until after May 12th as it stands right now. We've shoved all them out. So inside here, the court dates for any trials will be after the 12th of May. Another major essential that we don't think about a whole lot is our trash pickup. Republic is going to continue their normal service for residential and commercial. They are going to back off the bulk pickup due to some of the touching and everything that the employees have to do. They're trying to limit that, so the bulk, bulk pickup will be ceasing for that. But all the other pickups will stay as normal. So, and that's where we're at right now on everything that is happening for the city. As we move forward with this 10 rule and everything, there may be some more changes dealing with our library and even the city hall as this moves forward. So I just want to, it is very important. So that's my report.
Okay, do we have any citizens' comments?
I didn't receive any from us.
Next is the consent agenda.
On the consent agenda, we have two items, B and C, that we're actually discussing. Well, C is, has already been pushed, and on their permit, it has specific dates. So should we have them resubmit? And then also on B, pending our later discussion, that may, that may not even be in place.
Okay, so for the time being, do we just want to consider?
I would say consider A, yes, sir.
Do we have a motion on item five A?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept consent agenda A.
All in favor? Okay, all right. So we will press the pause button on B and C for the moment, or do we want to go ahead and make a motion on C stating that we would like it resubmitted into another data set?
I think we can. I think they've got a few dates in mind. I just don't think they've closed in on one.
Or just table it? Table it. Do you want to make that motion?
Just may I make a motion that we table, uh, make it, uh, C. At least test the last day.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, very good. Okay, we'll wait on that. Okay, consideration of committee recommendation regarding Lake Glade Water RFP.
Zero. Part Hughes presents.
Well, I know one of the discussion items that we had at the special session was that, you know, we wanted the attorney to look at the contract language, and he pointed out that we are in fact stating a three-year term on that and that we should perhaps consider removing that term. Is that something that maybe we would like to act on?
I would. I mean, I think that we need to if we're wanting to kind of go in a different direction. I mean, I think we need to open that up more.
Do you need a motion? I, I think we do. A motion or any additional comments or suggestions from before?
Make a motion to go with our attorney's guidance on that and go ahead and remove the stipulation for years.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, public hearing regarding demolition of structures located at various addresses here. So what we're going to do is start with, we're going to do these one by one. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing at 6:17 PM. We're going to start with 110 South Culvert Street. Is there anyone here to speak on 110 South Culvert Street?
All right. Uh, 110 South Culvert, uh, yesterday I did receive a phone call from the owner, Mr. Gregor Darian, and he said since he had recently started talks with someone to look into tearing it down, he said since we're this far along that he considered just go ahead and let the city tear it down, and he'll get with us when we're finished. Condition of the house.
Unplug projector, plug it back in, just there at the wall.
All right. Of course, noticeable, notice of violation sent out in January with building and standard commission, uh, sent out in February, and then the notice for council was sent out exactly 10 days prior to public hearing. The condition of the house.
It's not going to take a whole lot.
Yes. You see the front porch has collapsed on it. Uh, the windows and doors definitely are not intact here. This is an accessory building that goes along with it. This is the rear of the house. As you can tell, the roof structure is collapsing, already in bad shape. And this is, it's already been stripped out on the inside. I mean, from what I understand, Mr. Darian has been considering demolishing this house for several years, and has just never pulled it through.
Okay, any, any questions for Mr. Harrison?
It's not a secure property.
No. All right. Uh, is anyone here to speak on 112 South Culvert Street?
You don't want to? Okay. It's actually the neighbor of 112. Right. One of them who brought it to my attention said, hey, can you do something with this piece of property? Uh, this is actually a property that's owned by various heirs. It's in the person, Ms. Geneva Morris is the name. The county has it registered under, and then there's eight relatives that go along with that. They received their three notifications. Uh, now I have had a request. Uh, Ms. Mildred Sparks did call me yesterday and said they have a possible buyer for the house that would like to tow the house off. So they were asking for an extension now that he didn't state what type of extension they wanted. I said, you know, that would be totally up to y'all if y'all were willing to grant them that, but it would be no longer than maybe a couple of months if y'all did grant the extension. As you see, 110, it's in much better shape than 112, but as you can see, the house isn't level. There's various concerns with it. Been piling things up on the porch. And you see the roof damage, which I'm sure it leaks on the inside just as well as on the outside. You see the porch is pulling away from the front wall. The vines are growing into the house. Nature's starting to take over. And here you can see the bottom seal. It's no longer able to hold the nominal load it's intended to hold. You see where it's splitting, and the house is going two different directions there.
Risky if you're going to be able to move it anyway.
Yeah. It's a risk, but.
And they're not here.
They're not here.
Okay, 1205 North Edward Street. Anyone here to speak on 1205 North Edward Street?
1205 was Mr. William Davis and his wife, which are both deceased. Uh, there's five people that are listed as heirs, actually four. One of the people listed, actually, they didn't send, she's claimed she only lived there. She's not related to them, but she's on the list. They received all their notifications. This has been actually a long complaint for this neighborhood. Uh, it's been written up many times for maintaining the yard for a long time. Uh, we had trouble finding the person that owned the junk vehicle that sat there, but they've just totally quit maintaining this property at all. No one, this is the front carport area, and you go around the rear of it's even worse than the front. The sides open to the elements.
Okay, any questions on this one? 400 West Sunset Avenue. Anyone here to speak on 400 West Sunset Avenue?
Okay, 400 West Sunset Avenue. Ms. Tammy Allen did come by and visit me. She told me that she'd been in, uh, here at city hall, wants to talk to the city manager and tried to give the house to the city, of course. That was her trying to do, but she's got five other relatives she had to get to sign off on, and none of them want to sign off on it. They don't like a good chunk of change for this house, which ain't figured out how because, as you see, the house sits below the street line. It actually floods every time it rains. The front is the best part of this structure. The rest of it has no integrity at all. The back is missing 100%. So, I mean, there's none of it that holds, none of the, none of it is structurally sound. Not one bit that can handle the nominal load it's supposed to intake. All the windows are broken out and missing, as you see, not even there. So.
609 White Street. Anybody here to speak on 609 White Street?
Mr. Fonda? Now we're talking about your house. If you'd like. Okay, I will let you, Mr. Fonda and I have been in contact through this. Uh, we're actually kind of working together on how it's trying to get electricity to the house. Uh, but the power line actually runs across the front porch, so Swopeco will not hook the power back up the way it is. So Mr. Fonda had been working, trying to find electrician, and we're going to move the meter box to a place where he could get power hooked back up to it. But since then, the house has caught fire. And so, uh.
The one next to it was the one that actually caught, right? But it caught this. It's what it looked like when I stopped to look at it. I was just making sure that.
Mr. Fonda, would you like to comment on?
Well, I don't think, uh, there's three lots in there, and only one of them I have these two. Them others I don't have. And the guy that I had rented out to, he had a lot of junk boats and everything else around there. See, and, uh, so, you know, he seemed like he don't want to do nothing, you know, about it. But see, I don't own it. So I own the one that burned on the east side, and the one on the west side, that's where he was living it. And he had all that junk boats and thing around there. So, you know, you don't seem to, he called and talked to him. He don't seem like he want to do that. So it looked like, you know, it's just going to be all of them. I talked to one guy that, that he pointed to, uh, clean it up. He want $4,000 each of those. And the other one, who was a funeral, wanted $4,000 and I bought a, uh, deal to put the trash and stuff in it. So I don't seem like the lot is worth it. It's a small lot, you know. So that's what I love again.
Uh, the other lot, actually, no one owns it. It actually used to belong to Mr. Fonda's aunt, and she had no heirs. Mr. Fonda hasn't been kind enough to be paying the taxes on the property and everything. But we've been talking, and the option is, you know, if the city agrees to tear the house down and just 609 only, not 611, which is the next one, that we could probably get it done cheaper than if Mr. Fonda hired the demolition crew himself. And then if need be, he could even pay us off and pay the plan to pay off the bill for tearing down 609. That's the discussions we've had. So, as you see, the fire did a pretty good job, even though it tore up 611 pretty bad, but it got 609 pretty good. Between the fire, the smoke damage, the water damage, uh, we've talked about it, that it'd be better just to take the house down and then figure out something to do afterwards.
Did both that houses down, the one that burnt the worst and the other?
And the next one, that's the side view of 609, but there's 611, which is your next one up.
Yeah, well, that was 611, so we had to.
Which was Mr. Fonda's aunt's house. Uh, Bongda, we were weeks, and Mr. Frederick Williams was living there. You want to sit down?
No, no, I'm sorry.
Okay. As you can see, that house totally burned, most of his stuff. And so.
Any, any comments on?
Well, see, she didn't have no these and nobody, my aunt didn't have no these, and they, they living together. You go there eight, five, six feet apart. I doubt it, 10 feet. It's somewhere between seven, eight feet, you know. And they bought this other lot to have a garden. See, and they bought it in my aunt's land too. So that way, you know, the only thing there, I can have a little lot my mother had. But that's just two more lots there, you know. But, you know, I was going to do what, you know, having been so expensive, I was just going to go in there and learn. But, you know, I was going to do what, you know, it hadn't been so expensive, I was just going to go in there and learn, clean up the whole thing, you know, just let, go like that, you know, like it is, you know. But, you know, one of them, like I said, one of them price was, he was a little high, 4,800. And the other was 4,000, so that's what they want.
$4,000, but you had to provide the dumpster.
Yeah.
It's tough, yeah.
Costs just as much.
Do you have a recommendation for 609 and 611?
My recommendation is that we go ahead and we tear them both down. Now 609 would be Mr. Fonda's responsibility, and we would build him after. 611, there is no true deed that connects him to that property, except that, you know, his aunt lived there. But my suggestion is, I mean, both of them are fire damaged, beyond repair, and then we take them both down.
We're on, you're only interested in 609?
Well, you know, I've been keeping them up, they've got paid rent there, you know, to keep the taxes and stuff up for it. But, you know, it hadn't been so expensive that I was going to just, you know, keep, you know, pretend to keep it up like that. But, you know, I'm, if that's putting, you know, the chain, I don't think you wonder like, well, 4,800, you know. That's what they want, you know, to clean it up.
We can take them both down easily.
We appreciate you coming.
Well, I appreciate it. You know, taking them down, you know.
So you're speaking to 611?
Take care of one of them, 609. And I might just, on being with the price to be, I might just take care of the whole thing, you know. Red and I were looking at it, you know, that's a good little hunting game going on there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
My consideration is, you know, like I told you, I'm going to try and lump all these into one bid, because they generally get it cheaper if I get somebody to bid on all six of them at one time, and we'll get the best possible price and be able to save, you know, for Mr. Fonda, the amount of money that we can save him.
Okay, do, do we need to have any special notation in our motion on that specific property for that process he described? Or just?
Yeah, I think it's an individual property.
I just want to let you know a few other things. Uh, other properties that were hidden in front of you. 1203 Rodeo, which is another fire damaged property. From the time I initially contacted, sent out the letter on this property, it has changed hands three times. This is just an update that's not on the list. It now has a new owner that wants to try and renovate the house. Uh, 310 MLK has changed hands again. And I talked to them, and as you can see, now they're tearing it down themselves. And some of you might remember, 604 Eleanor came up in front of you a few years ago, and the guy got a permit and built that nice porch over front of it. Well, when it came back this year, and I told him that wasn't an option. And I said, you know, last time you came, you built a porch and you stopped. That's not going to be an option this year. So he pulled the permit, he's torn it down, and he will be removing it. What are you doing? Uh, the rest is to be continued and acced.
Let me go ahead and close, let me go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:33. 6:33, the public hearing is now closed. We now move on to the consideration of the demolition of these discussed structures. And we can do these one at a time, or we can do them in, in one motion?
I need, I need to abstain from doing.
Okay.
Because that is, that is my family's home.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd make a motion that we go ahead and go forward with the demolition of the structures in A, B, C, D, E, and F.
A, B, C, D.
Excuse me, yeah.
A, B, C, E, and F.
E and F, excuse me, yeah, E and F.
Okay, modify your motion to A, B, C, E, and F. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? All right, motion passes. Uh, we now consider, uh, property E.
D.
D, sorry. How do you, how do you know I didn't say D?
We can go to video.
Just making sure my speech.
Make the motion, please, to demolish D as well.
Okay, that is 400 West Sunset Avenue. Is there a second? All in favor? Okay. And one abstention, sorry. Okay, well now move on to item nine. Consideration of budget amendment for forestry service grant for a brush and or skid unit.
Mayor, Captain, thank you. Boss, thank you for letting us be here tonight. Try to keep this short as we can. Uh, tonight, we're going to talk about, um, Texas Forestry Service Grant. Uh, we just purchased some refrigerators, we're going to go over that with you. The AFG Grant, or EdCog Grant for next week, and then the last one we'll mention about the FAST Grant. So we're going to go through PowerPoint. I would like to start by thanking, uh, Christian for his assistance in getting this PowerPoint together. And, uh, so we'll try to move through this pretty quick. Um, at any point before I move to the next, uh, PowerPoint slide, I would ask, if you have questions, we'll stop and answer, try to answer those questions. Uh, grass seven is our only brush truck, and, um, through a little digging and what have you, I found out that the, the skid unit on it is about 16 years old. And, uh, so we, actually, the, uh, the hose reel that you see on the back there, uh, when we called to purchase a part for it recently, and they let us know it was, uh, produced back in the 50s. So it's in bad need of some upgrades, uh, it's been in the shop multiple, multiple times over my tenure in the last two years. And so we applied for a emergency, uh, um, grant through the Texas Forestry Service, and recently, and we received that grant. Um, that grant is for $15,000. And, uh, so, uh, it's a matching grant, the match is 1,500. And, uh, we've asked, uh, Uptown County ESD one, uh, they allow $2,500 a year, uh, for equipment. And so we've asked for, for that reimbursement. And so we'll, we'll pay for that grant if you, uh, you know, if we move forward, which we're, we're headed that way. We've already received it. And, um, we'll, we'll take those funds out of our, uh, Fire Department budget, and then, uh, we'll, we'll, uh, request these to, to, uh, be reimbursed to our, our city budget. This is going to replace the, the skid unit on the back. It's a brand new pump, a brand new motor, uh, some, uh, they're going to adapt the frame to make it more user friendly. New hose reel. Project right now, uh, the truck is at FireTech, that's, uh, who we awarded the, the project to. They're estimating two to four weeks, depending on parts and things of that nature. So as of right now, we've re, we have notified our departments around us, and they're going to be backing us up with their brush trucks until we can get ours back in service.
Are there any questions for Chief Cole? They want to agree to do the 1,500, I guess.
Yeah, yes, sir, Uptown County, I've, I've already made that phone call. Uh, we'll just simply break it, break it down, the 15,000, we'll, we'll send that, uh, to, uh, TFS, the 2604, for reimbursement, and then we'll turn around and, at the same time, we'll send an invoice for 1,500 to, um, Uptown County.
Yeah, we're going to do it, yes. So we, we now need to consider the budget amendment for the Forestry Service Grant.
That's a nice job, Chief. We've got a job with John, you can go up the ways and do your own funding on these things.
Well, you're going to get to see some neat stuff tonight, so we're, it's late.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the budget amendment for forestry service grant for the brush skid unit. All in favor? Now, item 10, budget amendment for our department refrigerators.
Okay, uh, in the past, uh, the Fire Department has, uh, used our donation fund, which is funded by 19, and, uh, we've purchased things like nozzles, the, uh, the Homatron, um, stave ladder jacks, um, you know, just various equipment, uh, as we get donations. And we've also, we put, I put all of our, um, small grants that we get, like the Hellness Boilin' Foundation Grant, um, and, um, you know, uh, Center Point Energy, uh, Walmart, all those different grants, small grants that we get, we put in that donation account. Well, the guys came to me because our C-shift refrigerator was, uh, going on the blink. And, uh, so they said, look, we need to replace this refrigerator. So they came to me with an idea to, um, replace all three of them and, uh, make the kitchen look more, uh, aesthetic. And so the idea was to, to, uh, go in our, our donation fund and, uh, pay for half of the three refrigerators. And then the Firefighters Association, they came up with the other work sheet, 74992. In saying that, that, uh, we've never, um, you know, we, we haven't had to come before council up until tonight to request the funding out of the Fund 19 account. So I've been advised of that, and so now we're, we're kind of behind, and so we've already purchased the refrigerators, and they're in place, and so, um, tonight, we're just, like I said, we're coming, we're actually behind in, in the requests. We should have made, I found out later, we should have made the request for, for, uh, before we ever made the purchase.
I've got a question on that real quick, because it come out of the donation fund, which it remind me, we spent, was it $1,900 on stabilizers last year, out of the donation fund as well?
It was, uh, something like that, and then, like I said, we bought new, new nozzles that were badly needed for engine two. Uh, we spent about probably 34 grand there.
I'm not, I'm not bucking the system here, and I'm, I'm trying to understand why we're requiring for them to spend their donation funds, they have to come to council?
Okay, let's back up. Originally, originally, the, the donation fund that he's referring to, the firefighters were taking $5 a month out and putting in it.
Yeah.
This has changed now. That $5 is going to the association now, or whatever they're doing. That's a totally different fund, the association's doing. They took and turned this, this was going to be their small things of donation. What has kicked in, just like you mentioned, I mean, he's got Walmart, $1,500. The Boilin', $3,900 once, and $6,400 the second time. Uh, XTL 3,000, and the Chain Foundation. All these going in there. These are grants that are formulated through the city. So now they've already spent, what's, what really brought this to the front is the truck that we switched around. They spent a little over $7,000 out of this account. Our auditors caught it and said, this is a vehicle, you got a purchase in of $2,000, it's got to be approved. They spent $7,000 on it without being approved. This is, this is making it ready. So it brought it to the attention, so when that came up. This is no longer the firemen's money, this is city money. Because none of these grants were done under the association, they were done through the city. So really, these are going to be recoded and put over in our city grant fund when it's all done.
These are all kinds for them, the.
They're for the Fire Department, but they got to be budgeted now going toward because of them.
How do you, how do you budget for donations? So, I mean, these guys are going out here and beating feet and doing all the legwork and everything, remember? Yeah, I'm glad you've done that, but you still got to have our permission to spend it, it just.
My line is, it didn't show up in our budget. It was all on purpose, it was in their stuff. Now it has to be pushed over.
Because we've never done it. Before, past, there's only been $1,000, $1,500 a year, you know, a couple thousand maybe, in that account. Well.
Well, but, and, and I understand, I understand, but in, in, in the way I'm saying, it seems counterproductive, because because they went above and beyond and got this big amount, now we're playing over here.
We just got, we just got. It's in city, it's in the city of Lake Water Neen.
If it was missed here, if it was something done wrong.
Yeah.
They're not going to say, well, we're going to go after those individual firemen. They're going to ask the city, now come, this wasn't done right, where's our money that we designated to be given to this?
It just, I guess, I guess because of the wording.
Well, the wording just like the, the Hellness Boilin' Foundation, you know, that's going to, by the time it is complete, it's going to be $34,000 for bunker gear for volunteers. And every time I get a check, I have to sign a letter that that month, so when I come to you, when we put a new volunteer on, asking for bunker gear, that was meant for bunker gear.
And, and to clarify, I'm, I'm not, I'm not arguing, I'm just looking for clarification.
Yeah, and this is, this is where it's going, I mean, what it's going to amount to out of this, you know, we're kind of chasing a little bit here, because in the past, it was done one way. We didn't, we didn't budget for the money, because they were putting it in. And at the same token, they were kind of spinning it out. But when it flipped around and became such a large, that changed the dynamics of it.
So it wasn't necessarily the refrigerators that caught the issue.
It was really the truck that caught it.
I got you.
You know, now, now it's everything that came out of it, because we've gotten so much. We got to show the revenue coming in as well as, and, and this won't be the, the last we'll see of this, because we'll have to do it again later, as he says, more comes in. Even on the revenue side, we're going to have to do this amendment later to show the revenue as a whole when we get closer, as well as the expenditures. I mean, we're just going to be a little bit more proactive, ahead of the curve as we move forward in this. So.
It's basically just a matter of cleaning it up and.
It is, it is, it's not a, it's just kind of moving some things around to make it jive with.
And, and like I said, I was, I'm just looking at clarification, because when I first read it, I'm like, well, it's a donation fund, I would build it. And it's for the firemen, so that's, that was just what I was looking at.
And they, and, and like the chief said there a minute ago, the donations are.
You're, you're fine.
Some of these donations are not just donations, they're grants.
Yeah.
So then grants got fingers tied to them, so we got to count for the fingers again. That's what we're trying to do in this.
I got you. Makes sense.
Okay, any additional questions on item 10? Otherwise, we go into motion.
Make a motion to, uh, do the budget amendment for the Fire Department refrigerators?
Yes, sir. All in favor? Okay, item 11. AF Grant for SCBA equipment.
Okay, well, let me start with, uh, first of all, uh, by thanking some people. We spent countless hours on this grant, and I'd like to thank, uh, Ms. Bardwell. She spent a lot of her time, free time, helping us with it. I'd like to thank Miss Amanda and, um, Christian, who spent countless hours on this thing. Ms. Judy over here, if we couldn't have done it without her, so we had to have her signature at the end, so. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Judy.
Most important thing.
That's not true, she had to get us our logins too.
Okay, so, um, basically what we're facing with is, right now, uh, we have, um, we're down to about 19 air packs. We, we used to have 26, and so the problem with them is, is they're, they're breaking down, and we can no longer get parts for them. So our air packs right now are 20, they're 30-minute bottles, make it simple for you. Uh, they're 30-minute bottles, 30-minute packs, and so, um, um, they're phasing this 30-minute pack out, and nearly the whole country will be eventually going to at least 45-minute cylinders and, and air packs. So, um, so that being said, the 23 cylinders that we have left, um, we started out with about 36, and so they have a 15-year shelf life. They go, they go every year, every five years, they have a hydro test done. And once they've reached that 15-year mark, we have to pull them out of service. So currently, we have 25 cylinders left that are in date. 23 of those go out in, uh, 2021. These air packs, uh, are about $7,500 apiece. Um, if, if you'll go back and look at my budgets for the, uh, we have made a request to the city in, in our past budgets for four every year, and we're not able to fund that. Right now, uh, going into 2021, if we just stay on pace with that, we can have at least 12 at this point. And so this AFG Grant, which is Assistance Firefighter Grant, um, we, we found this grant, and, uh, like I said, uh, with the assistance of a lot of folks, we, uh, ended up with a really, really good grant, uh, that went out there for 19 SCBA's, uh, 38 cylinders, 19 masks, 19 voice amps, and two, uh, rapid intervention team packs. And, uh, that's what this grant would, would purchase. The grant matches from the city would be $8,795. Uh, we could ask for that additional $1,000 from Uptown County, which bring that down to $7,795. Um, I, I don't know, three to nine months is what we're looking at to find out whether we get the grant. I know it's been submitted, it's been signed, it's in, in process, so it's one of those things where we sit and wait at this point. I feel like with all the narratives and the need, that showing the need and what kind of condition we are, we're in as far as the city, I think we have a really good chance at this.
Chief, I wanted to mention too, I was talking to chief about this, and one thing they brought up is, twenty-twenty-one, when those twenty-three cylinders go out, we will basically be fighting all fires from outside. They will not be allowed to enter any structure if we don't have firemen in packs. So if you've got a small kitchen fire or whatever, they're busting a window out and stripping your nose through it open, that works. So I'm hoping we get this grant. If not, we're gonna have to find a way to come up with these packs either way.
Well, another thing you have to look at is the standards, NFPA standards has been adopted by the state of Texas, which is NFPA fifteen hundred, NFPA nineteen eighty-one, nineteen eighty-two. They have specific language about providing the proper equipment for ideal age conditions. That could be, it could be a vehicle fire, it could be a structural fire, it could be a hazmat incident, it could be a lot of things. And so we have to have this equipment, and we have to provide it for our personnel. So again, it goes back to, you know, seventy-five hundred dollars apiece to try to do this, you know. I think our budget was like twenty-eight thousand last year for four air packs. So we're already behind. This would fund the whole project, and the city would only be out about, would be seven thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars to do the whole project.
What would be the total cost of this if we didn't do the grant?
You'd be in the ballpark of a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. That'd be, that's pretty accurate numbers. Nineteen SCBA's, thirty-eight cylinders, that'd be two cylinders per pack. And then this would replace our mask. We'd have nineteen of those, nineteen voice amps. And then our RIT bag right now, which is rapid intervention, when we have in this situation where a firefighter goes down inside of a structure, this is a piecemeal, it's a, you know, it's a bag that we purchased at like Lowe's and piecemealed it together. And these RIT bags will be a complete RIT bag, both of them, for that situation.
Where would, I'm sorry. Is this the one that could fund up to this and maybe does, or is that the other? Could be partial, partial?
Oh, no, sir, this would be, this is a full, this is a full grant. The AFG grant this year is somewhere around in the neighborhood of five hundred million dollars, but that's nationwide. So we're competing with fire departments all over the, all over the country for that. And the two big things this year for the AFG grant were SCBA's as a top priority and wildland equipment. So we just decided this was a good opportunity to take advantage of that.
So, big question, where would this come out of?
Well, we had the thousand dollars from them to reuse, but honestly, the bulk of it would come from reserve. We would try to cut what corners we could in the existing budget, but I don't foresee us being able to get near eight thousand by cutting our equipment budgets and other budgets. We'll do everything we can, but I'm thinking maybe a couple thousand dollars is what we would be able to come up with on our own and ask for the rest of another reserve.
So I can follow six grand out of reserve?
Yes.
As he stated, this may be, this may be nine months out too, so it may be in another budget, so.
So what are we, what are we talking about for tonight? I mean, what are, not what are we, that came out from, what do we need to do tonight for this?
Well, we haven't, we haven't till tomorrow to pull it out.
Okay. But I'm talking about what kind of, what are we considering tonight?
We're asking the approval to look forward with this package if it is granted, you will back with us?
And yes, but if we do receive it, you'll allow us to fund the money somewhere. You won't say, oh, no, wait, we're not gonna match the funds once we've already committed that.
You're getting a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars towards the equipment up to eight thousand dollars.
Yeah. Now savings of a hundred and seventy-seven.
And again, I will reach out to Uptown County for that extra thousand dollars that we have available to us for that, so.
And if it rolls into next year, we have twenty-five, right?
We have twenty-five that rolls over in the next year.
We can ask for twenty-five from Uptown County.
Gotcha, right, because you.
That's a pretty good, pretty good thing to have. I'd take, I'd give you eight thousand dollars if you gave me a hundred and eighty-four thousand.
Oh, I thought he was gonna offer to. Can we cut that second part off? You just want to fund it?
Are there any additional questions?
I mean, y'all can see right here in the picture, you see how many air packs are sitting there that, and there's tags on them. You can't see the tags, but they're parts only. I mean, we started out with twenty-six air packs, we're down to nineteen, can't get any parts.
I will recommend too, and I'm not saying no one has, but I've had a lot of questions when this stuff comes up, so I just go down and bug chief, and then they always open the door. I did find out if you're holding donuts, they open it fast. But, and he did, he took me in the building and showed me what he had on the shelf, so it kind of helped me wrap my head around it, so. I'm sure he wouldn't mind if you wanted some more questions answered, they're pretty willing down there, so.
So these other two things that you have coming up, are we gonna be being requested for funds with that as well?
Yes, ma'am.
One says zero branch.
Well, no, no, the.
One forty of friends.
Right, that one's taken.
And I'll explain that when we get it over to.
The other one coming up at the end.
The FAST grant, give me an opportunity at the end when we get to that.
Well, right, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna sit here and make a motion on one, commit to one without.
So you want me to go ahead and move to that? Would that make it easier for you to go to the FAST grant, talk about that in just a minute, or?
I would prefer that.
Are you presuming it's in the order that you would like?
Yes, sir, I mean, the FAST, the FAST grant is not on here, y'all can't vote on it tonight.
It's not a consideration.
Okay.
Okay, it's not a consideration, and we also have to bear in mind that this grant is due tomorrow. I mean, we have to commit tonight, because tomorrow's the deadline to pull it.
Yes, sir.
On the nine months out? Why are we guessing?
It's three to nine months. Three to nine months.
Is it when they're gonna approve it, or when they're gonna release money, or?
It's when they would approve the grant for us to receive it.
They gave themselves a six-month window?
Because it is such a large amount.
And worse than, Coach, we're in competition with, I mean, literally hundreds.
And I don't mind you all having the tanks, that's not a deal, just remember to help us a bit, wait.
You gotta remember what just happened this week. I mean, this may be the lady even further.
Trying to say they have something else on their plate.
Tell me, play what? It's harder to get the committees together.
If you don't win the grant, this becomes a moot point. Exactly, I mean, we're.
Since other ones are not on the deal, I just wanted to make sure that we ask for additional funds, that we make sure that.
Good, good point. No, that was an excellent point.
Excellent. Okay, so do we have a motion on the AF grant for SCBA equipment?
There's a motion that we, I'm sorry, consideration of the budget amendment that we do that for this, the grant here with an amount of seven thousand seven ninety-five, or?
Well, you would need the whole eighty-seven ninety-five.
I would be, to be safe, I would rather you go with the full amount, let me talk to them and see if we can pull that out. Amount of eight thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars for a SCBA grant.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion passes? Okay, item twelve, consideration of the COG grant for radios. Joe, top spot?
Okay, we've already discussed this with council. This is the COG grant. We'll be competing with fourteen counties through the COG in Killbord. We'll be doing this Tuesday morning from nine twenty to nine thirty is our slot. And now they've moved it instead of in person, it's gonna be on the phone. So they'll be calling the station that morning, we'll put them on speakerphone and have this conversation. So the total grant that funding that we're gonna ask for is ninety-eight thousand five twenty-three. This would give us thirty portables and six mobile radios to upgrade the radio system that we have for our vehicles and our firefighters. And so we don't know at this point what we would get out of that, but whatever we get, we can put towards, even if, even if it buys two portables, three portables, five portables, and then next year, we can go back and ask for some more. So this is a zero cost to the city. And so we'll be doing that tomorrow, or like I said, next Tuesday, so I just wanted to keep y'all up to date on that, on that grant as well, so. Yeah, y'all have already voted on this, so, yes, sir.
Y'all don't have to take any action.
I had you, no action on item twelve. Okay, hey, thank you, chief, very, very much.
But this was the one you were talking about, that whatever amount you.
I've got the FAST grant.
Sorry, I apologize.
Yes, sir. Okay, this is a AFG grant, or not AFG grant, this is an AG grant, this is a state grant. It's called FAST, and it's designed to purchase fire, ambulance, and service truck vehicles. If we were allotted to go after this grant, y'all agree to let us do it, we would be asking for five hundred thousand dollars. The match on it is five thousand dollars. And the grant writing company, and I, we have one, and I can't, unfortunately, can't mention their name, but they've agreed to write the grant for us for thirty-five thousand dollars. So that would leave the department with four hundred and seventy thousand dollars to buy a new engine. My hopes are that if we receive this grant, would be to replace our aging engine one. I will tell you that this would virtually, if we got this grant, would not cost the city anything because. Not sell the truck, we can go back to Uptown County ESD again. They not, they put twenty-five hundred dollars in for equipment and six thousand dollars in for fire trucks. And so we could go and request that funding of five thousand dollars to do the match. The city would virtually be out nothing. And we could, we could take that four hundred and seventy thousand dollars and purchase a brand-new engine.
And where does that truck go?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, are we gonna sell that?
My, that's your decision, but if you're asking my professional opinion, we're short on ISO equipment. We want to, when ISO comes back next time, we want to get a hundred, absolutely six hundred and fifty points for our engines, the max you can get. And so my recommendation, I believe you would get more for that apparatus on a trade-in, and then that would allow us to take some of that trade-in and purchase the needed equipment to bring the engine up to where it needs to be. Does that make sense?
Yeah. You said the grant writing fee, that you said it's thirty-five thousand only if we're awarded the grant?
That's correct.
That's coming.
Now, the company. Yeah, if they don't get it, they don't receive anything, and so.
They get it only if they land the grant.
And so I, you know, if there's, this is not an action item, but if you would like me to move forward, then we'll need to get it on the agenda because they need about three months to get this put together and put in, and it runs out in July. So we're not in a great big hurry, but it'd be nice to have it on the agenda if you'd like to move forward next month and bring it up for a discussion and an action.
Now, have you spoken with Uptown County about your desire to purchase a truck to secure?
I have their letter, I have their letter to secure that, and they've done that for all their, all their contract departments. So they have four contract departments, and we're one of them. And so they've told me that they've done it for them, so they'll do it for us, so.
So one of these trucks, brand-new, is around four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars?
Well, it depends on, you know, how many bells and whistles you want to get. I just looked at Athens, it's eight hundred and one thousand dollars, so. Yeah, I mean, so we, it would not be a frill truck. It would be, it'd be bare bones, pretty much basic.
Still, you're talking about a four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar vehicle, the city would only be out five thousand dollars. But you're saying we want to be out that, because we'll possibly get rid of that.
I'd like to see it on the next agenda. Any additional questions for Chief Roll?
Is that something the council feels like they would like for me to move forward on? That's all I've got. Now, I would, before I sit down, Mayor, I would like to say this, that thank you very much. Thank you very much for your leadership and all this stuff that's going on. And I want to say I appreciate you as the EM for the city, and the same with Ricky over there and city staff. I just gotta brag because y'all are doing an outstanding job for the city, staying on top of things, so I appreciate you.
Thank you, chief, very much.
Thank you for all that you're doing with this COVID, chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Appreciate all your work as well.
My pleasure.
Absolutely. Daily, we mentioned earlier, some of these meetings are in Congress are occurring daily. That's, there's your daily guy right there, so thank you, Chief Roll, very much.
All right, chief, how do you make the grill you? Come on down. I'm gonna try to make this fast. Okay, I don't make this bigger. I got you, I got you.
Afterwards, you wanted to thank the conversation.
Mayor, council, city manager. What I'm bringing to you all tonight is when I got hired a little over a year ago, I told y'all that I was looking at a program called D-DAGs. Since then, I've gone to three different schools, got all three levels. And with the cooperation of Techside, Adliss, Longview Police Department, Jordana over at Longview, she's helped us greatly, and also Michelle Cahill over at Edco. She made all the maps for us. All we had to do is get to that and get it to her. This represents three years of Glade Water historical statistics. It covers in your packet, if you look at the first map that you see, it's all green. Now, the darker the green gets, the more traffic stops were made at that location. Yeah, that's a big one, isn't it? But if you go to the next page, you have the little pink dots, and they get bigger. The bigger the pink dot is, the more accidents occurred at that intersection. And on the next page, and your hand out, this is what we call focus crimes. Now, these are crimes that police can generally have an impact. Out of all the calls and all the data that we had, we took out some of the misdemeanor charges, and we took out family violence because we can't control that, okay? So these are all of our focus crimes that you're looking at. Now, the darker it gets in that picture, the more crimes, the more calls we have heading to there. So that gives you an area of where our crimes are actually being committed. Now, on the last page, you have this map. And this map is an overlay of all, you have the green with your traffic, the purple with your vehicle accidents, and then the brown would be crime activity. Burglaries, vehicle habitation and building. You have all your felony thefts. It incorporates all the felony drug activity. It incorporates all the felony drug activity. Okay? So with when you get down to them to the bare bones, this is kind of a picture of what we're looking at in Glade Water. Well, D-DAX is established traffic patterns, crime areas, and crash hotspots. This is going to help us do the same thing that y'all pay us to do, only smarter. Because now instead of just reacting and going, now we have historical statistical data that's going to lead us to where we need to be. Now, a D-DAC area is an area that you want to focus on for a period of time and measure your results. So if you look at the map, if you start at Four Corners, you've got accidents there. Well, we have accidents on both ends of the loop, too. We're not going to quit working that area. But we're going to focus from Four Corners up to Gay Avenue, across Gay Avenue to Eastlake, back down Eastlake, and then back over to Four Corners. If we make that a D-DAC area and I make my officers go in that area fifteen, twenty minutes, leave out per hour, come back fifteen, twenty minutes, and they hit it, say, nine, ten times a day. We should, through repetition, see a drop in the crime and the accidents in that area. Okay? Statistically talking, if somebody's going to do a crime, burglary of the house, criminal mischief, theft, if they see an officer in that area, you've deterred them for thirty minutes to two hours. If that officer stops them and IDs them, you've deterred them for the whole night or the whole day. Because now they know the cops are there, they're going to stop you. And it it builds a repetition that the crooks will learn and say, hey, I can't go over there and do anything because the cops are going to be there. And it's basically kind of what we're doing now. This just gives me the statistical data to let everybody know why we're doing this. Now, you may be asking yourself, why am I talking to the city council? Well, when we start flooding this area with police presence and we start stopping people, you may be getting a few calls. Okay? And it's not that we're picking on any particular person. We're picking the area. Because that's where we go. That's what we do. Now, if you look at the at the first one, where the green is on your traffic stops, and then look at your focus crimes, as you can tell, our green gets pretty light in there. So what I'm going to do is make that green a little bit darker. And as that gets darker, then the dark brown should go away a little bit. Now, Longview's had this program going on for three years. They first started it and they were changing stuff every month. When I was talking to Jodana over there, she advised me, do your data quarterly. Because it's going to be like lack of mode if you don't. Because they will move, and you go hit them there, then they move back. If you consistently stay in one spot, once another hotspot pops up, we can, hey, spend fifteen minutes, an hour over there. Come back over here, spend thirty, do regular patrol around the city for the other fifteen of that hour. It's it's working for Longview. Their crime rate has significantly gone down since they introduced D-DAX. You have in your pack a little pamphlet when we do go in these in these areas, people that are outside, people that you want to go talk to. When you walk up to the door, the officer can have the pamphlet in his hand, hand it to them. If you need any information on D-DAX, this is where you go. This is what it's about. It's just a brief summary of some of the things that D-DAX are. And that will be increased officer present. Talk with the residents that live in the zone, explain why and what we're doing there. And that, I believe, will bring the community and the police a little bit closer together. Because the officer will have to be getting that.
Those communities are more like crime.
No, the good people can be out more in front. And we, case in point, we ran a drug warrant. And I'm not going to tell you where, but we ran it. And as we were leaving, the lady on the corner came out crying, thanking us for being there, thanking us for stopping that. Because she said the traffic was atrocious and the type of people that were coming into her neighborhood, it was staring her for her children, you know? We've run three drug warrants so far in Glade Water since I've been here in the past year. We definitely have issues with drugs in Glade Water. I don't know what the biggest arrest on methamphetamine is, but we got just a tad bit under two pounds, two pounds of methamphetamine. And it was the good cartel methamphetamine. With increased patrol, with numbers of officers that I've got, I've got a staggered shift. So it looks like we have more than what we do. This program is good. I know it's coming at a bad time because right now, I have heard three people use the word fluid in the time that we're in. And this past week and a half, wouldn't you say, has been very fluid? It's been just coming in and going out. I don't think that we will start this right now. But I think after after the community heals from wherever we're going with this this virus, I think this would be a good program to institute. And we have all anticipations that we could make a difference in what we've got. But right now, with everything on COVID-19, we're just kind of in limbo, just kind of trying to make it work.
Appreciate you being thoughtful of that.
Does anybody have any questions on the D-DAX?
Now, I will say, for having a business downtown and for the chief to be on duty, that my security cameras all night long before him taking his position with us, whenever somebody walks past or behind my building, it alerts me and it wakes me up. And I was up all the time. And in some cases, I freeze them, what are you doing? And since that man has taken on his position in this city in that downtown area, I sleep because nobody is down in the areas they're not supposed to and the towns they're not supposed to be. And so I come in.
She's saying that we all need to get hired.
Yep. At three o'clock in the morning, when you see, and then all of a sudden, they're down there. The presence are known, they've made their presence known, the mischief, the nonsense.
Well, I can thank y'all for the opportunity to be at chief. Because I can tell you, in the last year, now the day has gone by that I hadn't learned something. Some things I didn't want to know, though. But no, on this. I know the more traffic stops you make, the more crowded you're back. Sixty percent of all felony arrests come off of the traffic stop on one. I knew this, and I've had the opportunity to go to the schools. And by the way, the schools didn't cost the city anything. Techstop paid for the schools and AdLust paid for the hotel rooms and the lodging. So, I mean, this was all free. Plus, we ended up working on two grants from Techside, which will pay us to do the commercial motor vehicle stops, which we're doing already, and other activities during holiday season. So I'm a data guy now. So.
Well, thank you for everything you and all the officers are doing. We greatly appreciate it.
And I will pass that word on like I should. I couldn't do it by myself. I've got a great team. We've got some young officers that are just on top of everything.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Item sixteen, consideration of appointing a local rabies control authority.
Item sixteen is, this is a, they said the state has pushed out that they want a local local rabies control authority to be designated for a specialty. So being that falls under, it's what has now the control officer, or being this police department, we have designated the police chief to be that local control person. Part of that reason for is if if there is a rabid animal or a animal that bites in general, they can issue tickets if they're not properly have their shots and stuff. So so it kind of falls both ways. So it is needing a peace officer to be in charge of that. And typically, they would need somebody there. Anyhow, so that was our recommendation.
Step up and do that. I know it.
He didn't get a choice. He didn't know until earlier today.
Well, thank you for knowing. Ricky's gotten smarter. He didn't ask me for it.
Oh, by the way.
Yeah, this is a new part of your job.
I'm sure there's going to be some special training that the state offers.
There is a class that Senator that is coming up. Don't know what the outcome has been be on that yet because of the fluid times that we're living in. But I've got that registration paperwork. I will get with you on that.
Well, I think it'll be.
We have to have one person.
Yes, we're. I I feel like we'll probably have a few. Right now, we are writing tickets for felony immunized. If we go on a dog call and they can't produce the vaccination charts, we'll write them right there and then we'll write them for dog at large and just double ding them. But I.
Pretty much already in this.
Yeah, pretty much.
You just have the official title now.
Yes.
To add.
Okay. All right, so we need a motion to appoint Police Chief Gordon Freeman.
Go for it.
Just the local one.
Okay.
All right, I made a motion that we appoint Chief Gordon for the, what's that, rabbit?
Rabbit.
Rabbit.
Yeah, rabbit.
I said him.
All in favor?
Y'all, one more. That's it.
You're a punk, sir, man, and not a chief.
Item fifteen, discussion of proposed ordinance regarding gaming rooms and amusement redemption machines.
Yeah.
I can start out and I give it to you, whatever. This was a item that we that I went to at TML last year was a presentation. And my city of Victoria and their city attorney. And it was it was really good information about the gaming ordinance. And they had some changes that they made. And I came to copy. I went through it and gave it to Chief Freeman to look through. And anyway, so we kind of went over it together. Give that to him to work through and look through and go through what other agencies are doing and have his own input. And so this is where we come today. So I'll let you.
Okay, Gray County does not tolerate them at all. The DA will prosecute them if he finds any violation of chapter forty-seven of the gambling. Okay? Upstate County just went through and adopted their rules and regulations on gaming rooms. However, they have several of them there that are going to do what? Grandfather in. And they are giving them some time to change. Well, myself and Council Alexander kind of thought that we need to get something in play here before somebody tries to move in a gaming room. And if you read the ordinance that's in there, it's pretty strict. You they've got to go through a criminal history check. The owner of the property has got to sign off and understand that they can be held liable, too. If any violation, any violation of this ordinance or chapter forty-seven of the gaming law, we can shut them down right there. We don't have to ask nobody, shut them down. If they have ten days to have a hearing, that hearing will be with me. So.
So we allow them right now?
No, we we Glade Water has no ordinance on gaming rooms.
I thought we did with that one out there going towards South Tyler.
Okay. We stopped the one out there on South Tyler. But we're advised by Ron Stoops that we actually had to allow them to apply and go through the process, and then we had to catch them to get rid of them.
So keep going up today.
So.
Was it too long ago?
This one.
At JT's, this piece of property after my airport, Matt started noticing these things on, and we called him. And that's exactly what they were trying to do.
So we shouldn't have, because they not applied.
Yep, we shut them down because they hadn't applied for a CO or anything, and we made it very.
When I walked through there.
We made it as difficult as we could.
When I went through there, they didn't have the Texas Comp Controller's certificate. They didn't have a permit of operation for Glade Water. And I physically or actually saw the lady pay out cash money.
But she had your permission, remember?
Well, they were telling me when I walked through, I said, you need you need to shut the doors. But we've already talked to the chief. He said it was okay. So then the guy that owned it got on the phone. He told me the same claim. I said, I'm the chief, and I didn't say it was okay. And they we shut the doors that day and moved the machines out. But that was a close call because we were advised that they could apply for permit of occupancy in the Glade Water. And if you read that ordinance, if somebody wants to put a legitimate gaming room in Glade Water and be legitimate, they probably could. But with this even goes into detail of having to have a scaled sketch, if you have six parking spaces, you can only have six machines. Where in Glade Water, you're going to find more than two or three parking spaces that you can put in a building? You know? And they're not going to put in two machines.
So we're not protected at all by Gray County not allowing it at all?
That's only if you find them guilty and they're created a crime.
Yes. And that is. If that was perfect, everybody would follow suit. They have resources. They have the code officers that can go in and work it. They have other assets that we don't have in Glade Water. But if you really read that ordinance, it's more of a deterrent than it is an actual come on in Glade Water for a gaming room.
So, Chief, if you would just take a minute, because I've actually had a couple people ask me about this. Explain to citizens why we don't want this in the city.
Crime example, just north of town on two seventy-one. Do you know how many felony arrests come out of that building? You know how much drugs are dealt in that building? There's prostitution, there's illegal gun sales. I mean, my guys help Upstate County Narcotics work that constantly. And it is an issue. You go further down two seventy-one to the big one right before seven twenty-six, constantly have problems there.
I constantly have calls all that long because I own a Bluebird room. And I talk to these people all the time, every hour, all the hours. It's pretty ridiculous. In fact, I had one before I came in here today.
Well, and with this ordinance, they have to be licensed by the state. They have to pay taxes. These others, they're not. They're operating a cash business.
Y'all had many calls out there on Mesquite.
Well, that's a new one that's coming up. And yes, they've already had issues out on Mesquite.
Let me know how many cities allow these things to come into their cities? Are they pretty much ruled?
Pretty much, everybody's putting in an ordinance.
Nobody wants any.
And if you have an ordinance in the city, they go out to the county. Longview has an ordinance, Tyler has an ordinance. And it's just. It's a precaution so we don't get caught. I mean, if if somebody wants to come in by this ordinance, they're going to be a legitimate business owner. They're not going to be these fly-by-nights. They're going to do it right, and they're going to do it by what the law says. Because if they don't, they get shut down.
So to have one of these, do you have to have it in a commercial zone? Or can they just pop up one in here?
No, they're going to have to be in a commercial zone.
Yeah, we have a catch on that. In Arizona, we have the word gamer. We don't have anything called gaming. So my interpretation is if they want to come in town, they'll need a specific use permit and they have to come planning zoning in front of y'all to get in. And I'll stick by my interpretation of.
And that's what we're going to have to say. We've got six parking spaces, but we want to put in thirty machines. We've got six parking spaces, but we wanna put in thirty machines. No, you can't do that. It's an ordinance. And they discussed this, that was the single most effective part of the ordinance to get rid of the game rooms. They had twenty-some-odd game rooms in their city in a year. They had like three left. They were gone because they will, in order to hit a profit margin, you gotta have so many machines. They wanna cram it completely full of machines.
No, it's adding a whole new ability.
They were at strip shopping centers and so on. There's a donut shop and a cleaners. And nobody could do business at those other businesses because the cars were all clogged up there. They had to park and walk, half a block up carrying clothes to the cleaners because they had everything shut out for the game room. You see what I'm saying? They just expand because it's so many people trying to move into such a small area. So, it's like in order for city planning, well, you have one monitor. You have one parking, designated parking spot. And so, when they try to go in these places, just limited parking, that they can't make. Some of them don't make it. Saying off, when that property owner, they rent these things and don't really, aren't real clear what they're doing with them, property owner has to know. He has to know that he could be filed on criminally for gambling or he could be sued because he's allowed this to happen on his property that he doesn't have any protection. That he knows what's going on. And most property owners like, no, I'm not gonna do that. And you know, they'll, they'll back off because they don't wanna get involved in any of that when they find out they're operating these game rooms. So, it's not a fact of allowing them to come in. It's just that they, they can do kind of whatever they want. It's free country. You start doing that business you want. But this will give us some protections to control that. Otherwise, we have no regulations whatsoever. Then do kind of whatever we do. We gotta try to make stuff work to keep them out. Then, you know, will we have to give them a certificate of occupancy and prove they're violating the law before you can, you know, get them out of there? This will make sure that if they ever do get here, they're showing up as a legitimate.
So, you're on the same page? You're on the same page? And this is all on the same page?
Yes.
Okay. I will say this to organizations that work with sex trafficking. Game rooms are always on their radar where they go in. So, it's, it's something that we do not want here in Lake Water.
Well, and what they have to do, just in the application for the licensing.
So, you're confident?
I am.
I have confidence in you.
And, and in that licensing, you know, as in a game room, you will have some illegal activity. And the police will not know about this illegal activity until later on. Whether it's a fag, somebody selling some dope in there. Well, in that ordinance, once I get that information after the fag, that ordinance gives me the teeth to go in there and say, hey, you're the person you had running it and you did not report that to the police in a timely manner, I'm locking your doors. And then they have to have a hearing with me. So.
So, is this gonna come back before the council? Or is it just as a discussion?
Yeah, it's a discussion because there wasn't enough time to actually. There's so much of the food truck ordinance, you know, there's, there's gotta be some time spent formulating a proper ordinance.
Yeah, we can make changes if y'all want.
Well, let's get it down and get it back on the agenda of the vote.
I read through it. I mean, touches everything. The part I like is, which I like to set up your county budget too, is the, the hours of operations.
Yes, yeah.
That gives you a little more control and, and a little, some more visibility because you've got them operating at a certain time during the day. And if they're, if they're trying to operate outside that, that gives you more, as you said, teeth to go in there and put something up.
Well, there's the items marked in red or just, they don't, it's sort of synced with our numbers with the ordinance that would be put in. Those are just so that when Judy does this, you'll know where they go and have about this just to keep those, those there. The other one was a copy and paste into Word, so the formatting is all messed up from the application. And so, the original other cities' application P E F was included just to show how neat it was and how it would work. But that was still the same.
So, we're losing basically the ones that we're looking at here is one that you personally.
Carol.
The two of you.
Yeah.
We guys are a bunch of power.
Thank you three for taking us on.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Well, it's, with Upstate County doing theirs and we don't have anything.
They're gonna flood this way.
They're, they're gonna migrate. They said walk them home.
They're already right there at the city limits anyways.
So, if y'all want to instruct me to put in an ordinance.
There's, this isn't a consideration item, but if you could read the room.
Yeah. Am I reading correctly? I need to work with those that have already been working on it, okay? I'm reading it.
I'll see you at the council meeting.
Yeah.
I'll second what she said. Thank y'all for doing this. All for you in front of us.
Thank you, yes. Thank y'all for reading very much. We've got a presentation consideration item regarding Enterprise Fleet. This was out Monday. Yes, this is Nick Hartwick. He's with Enterprise Fleet. This is kind of pulling back around, coming back closer to the idea. So, wanted to bring this background to the council. See if this is something that we wanted to consider out. This is dealing with our fleet of our, our vehicles that we have out here, so.
It'll take us a few minutes to get set up.
Okay, but we're gonna take a recess.
Oh, you can get set up.
Oh, you get set up, okay? So, we're gonna have a recess beginning at seven thirty-five. And we will go back on since at seven forty. Bye, everybody.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, we're now reconvening at seven forty-two, a little bit outside of the five-minute recess there. Okay, we now have a presentation regarding the Enterprise fleet.
Yep. I think, thank you, everybody, for letting me steal some of your time. I'll make this quick, I know this can get to everybody home as quick as possible. But I'm the Fleet Management Division Enterprise. Everybody's probably heard of the rental car brand of our business. This is the fleet management side of our company. We work with everything from public to private organizations, help them manage and get a sustainable fleet plan. It helps them run a newer, more efficient fleet, safer fleet for typically the same or less capital, operational dollars than they historically spend. And so I had opportunity to go through the fleet for the city of Glade Wire, spent a lot of time diving into the data, looking at the mix of vehicles that they have, really come up with some recommendations. Of all, they kind of mirror some of the things we do in some other cities here in Texas. And we have quite a few out here in the East Texas area for long view, Windsboro, Quipman, New Boston, Silver Springs, Carroll Kaufmans, all in the Texas area that we currently work with. They currently have over a hundred cities in the state of Texas that we currently work with, help manage and control expenses associated with their fleet of vehicles. And when we truly say the expense, it's everything from acquisition through disposal of vehicles and all things in between. It's really about shifting the way the city spends its money as it relates to vehicles and their replacement plan in general. And again, address everything, maintenance repair, fuel, all those things above, really help control and look at the fleet from a very, from a macro level to make really big picture decisions versus getting a few grand, what each individual vehicle really, how can we make an impact on the city as a whole? I'm going to go through a couple of examples of what that, what that really means. One is this test model of a city, Commerce is a client of ours. Now, these are atypical results that we see from work with cities. Most cities, they buy a vehicle, they hold it for a long period of time, they resuscitate it, and they run it a little bit longer, basically till it dies and they make it run a little bit longer. That's the average city and state, state of Texas. Not too many cities have fully funded equipment replacement funds. But cities don't, they run, and part of the result of that is, you know, you're having higher operational costs, increased downtime. And a lot of times it means the city runs more vehicles in the fleet than it necessarily needs. If the whole fleet is brand-new, stayed brand-new, what we need is being vehicles as we, as we have to, if we're more efficient. And so like with Commerce, it's really common to see a seventy-three percent reduction in maintenance repair expense, which is atypical because how maintenance repair works for a city, you set a budget. Budget is really a guideline, it's nothing more, you're going to spend what you're going to spend. You really have control over, over what you, what you spend. And the only way to reduce your budget in terms of maintenance is not change the number on the budget, it's actually replacing vehicles and not doing maintenance. The only way to not do maintenance repair is to replace the vehicle before it actually needs those, those large repaired items coming down the pipe. And that's where, that's why by running a newer fleet of vehicles, you typically can see those large reductions in maintenance repair expenses as it relates to the city. As well, if you do see impact on fuel, running newer, more efficient vehicles, our sure budget is also going to go down. And like with them, they were able to reduce their fleet by thirty percent. And that's because they're running a brand-new fleet of vehicles, didn't need quite as many, because we didn't have to have as many, you know, quote-unquote spares sitting around. And it's not, a lot of times, see, we'll get a replacement vehicle, we don't actually replace that vehicle, that vehicle goes, sits on a lot somewhere until, until we need it, sometimes sold, sometimes it does not. And this is really about putting a long-term standard plan in place that's going to help control, control the fleet size to the optimal size that the city needs, that will keep the budgetary dollars as low as we possibly can. And, you know, every city we work with, so we have mostly piggyback off one or two awards that we have in Texas, one, one from TIPS, which is primary one, most cities in Texas piggyback off of, or Sourcewell. The secondary, we also have some other powerful people out there, so we see most cities piggyback off one of those two cooperative agreements that are out there. And it's really, it's all encompassing, so it's very broad, it's a fleet manager award. Our, our job is to manage the fleet, you know, super nuts. And it usually starts off with us putting together a replacement plan around the fleet, looking at what the city historically spending its dollars, and then setting there that five-to-ten-year plan in place that really is forward-looking for a city. Also help the fleet keep the, the fleet as nimble as we possibly can, because what the city needed ten years ago is very different than what the city needs today typically. We want the fleet to be in a position where we can add and flow the vehicles for the right type, for the right application that the city needs at any one given time, as the demands on the city constantly change. So I'm all, by the way, this is a pretty much Q and A session, so feel free to ask questions, a lot of power talk here. So acquisitions of vehicles, how, how we look at acquisition of vehicles, there's two ways to acquire. One, through dealer lots that are out there, through state contract dealers or, you know, local dealers, whatever makes sense. Or we order them directly through the factory, through the government buyer programs, directly at the factory level, which is the most cost-effective way typically to acquire a vehicle. Only exception to that sometimes is state contract through, for PD vehicles, that sort of thing, through your Caldwell's, whoever has the various awards throughout the given year. So our job is to help evaluate all the manufacturers, and then, and look at your Chevy's, Fords, whoever it is, and provide recommendations to cities, hey, this is the lowest cost of vehicle to operate. Not just looking at acquisition costs, but looking all the way through to, you know, resell that vehicle, knowing when to sell that vehicle. Best example I can give you of that is, a lot of cities will go buy regular cab pickup trucks at times, that's the cheapest truck you, you go buy. But the numbers tell us it's cheaper to run a crew cab than it is to run a, a regular cab, purely because of resale. Because you look out there in the parking lot, you don't see as many regular cabs out there as you used to. And so you want your fleet to kind of mirror, if your resale is a factor, you want to kind of mirror what's going on out there in the population that has demand that people are trying, trying to buy. So that's part of our job is to bring that advice to the table. Sometimes it's cheaper to run S U V nowadays than it is to run a sedan, and we have sedans in the fleet, because that is, not a lot of these sedans will be purchased, more S U V will be purchased. So we want to mirror some of that as well, so that's part, part of our job, and be agnostic as it comes to manufacturers as well. Resales can be a big piece of what we do. So Enterprise is a company that manages around two million vehicles as an organization as a whole. You know, we have over a million there, they're owned by Enterprise and sells to our rental car brand. And we place a ton of emphasis on when to sell a vehicle, when's the best point in time. I'm going to show you something kind of very tricky to beat from a government standpoint, because you buy vehicles cheaper than anybody else can as a government entity. Of what, which, if, if we can get away from selling through public auction, there's some ways we can capitalize on that, and that's part of what we, we help the cities do. And we only sell, as a company, we sell zero vehicles through public auction, only about fifteen percent of our vehicles are sold through your regular auction channels, your manhams of the world, and those sort of big auction houses that are out there. There's really three ways cities fund vehicles that we work with, either like, one, if they're in a heavy cash position, they're well-funded, equipped, replacement fund, they pay cash for the vehicle, lease source vehicle, they cut checks. Otherwise, they use it to step on some form of finance, either true finance, basically down, pay it off over a period of months, or we take it down on equity lease, which, to a book value of some sort. So by twenty thousand on a vehicle, we take it down to a five thousand book value, so that difference is amortized over that period of months. So a lot of different ways that cities fund vehicles do this, but I think almost every city in the, in East Texas area that we work with over here, they all fund it through equity lease systems, equity slash capital lease of some sort. So talk about holding strategy, this is just a big piece of what we talk about every year, and holding the periods of time is a moving target. It's not a set, forget it, every year, our advice is going to vary. Part of what the city's hiring us for is we, we bring accountant manager team in in place, that acts as an extension for the city, active extension of the department, as a separate department for the city, just doesn't physically, not physically on the payroll. And their job is to continually evaluate this and bring new ideas to the table. So one example that I always like to give is, you know, the average cost to buy a three-quarter ton truck, depending on how you stack it out, was around twenty-seven-six last year. But you run, cities run very low mileage, apparently, just because they're semi-condensed, you're not like your Dallas, you're not driving fifty miles each way. You have fairly condensed areas if you're driving, thus you drive low, low mileage. And, and because of that, at the end of the period of year, and this is an example, a lot of times we can go sell that truck for twenty-eight thousand dollars a year down the line, after running it for only about, you know, seven to ten thousand miles, and over, and operation over that period of time, for the same or more money than the city originally acquired it for. And so that's all about identifying what's, and just think, if you're running that type of cycle, just think what that does to maintenance repair expense for the city, virtually eliminating for all intents and purposes. And even things like, like the Malibu example there, where it lost eight hundred, eight hundred dollars over the course of a year. Well, you have held that vehicle for seventeen years, equal that same loss in value in just that one year period of time of holding, holding that vehicle. And this is part of our job and what we do to both bring this in and implement it. So how, how maintenance repair works, to us, we, we contract with local shops in, in the tax base. We break up maintenance repair a couple of different ways, for all non-emergency response vehicles. We set them up under a fixed cost maintenance program, so month one through month whatever, the city pays the same fixed budgetal amount, so it's no longer a guessing game. And we're guaranteeing you that you're not going to spend more than this dollar amount, where it really depends on how long we have that vehicle set up on hold here. We can guarantee that cost for four or five years. The way we do that, we have enough vehicles in operation, we know on average our cost of repairing a tan vehicle, like the life insurance actuary table, we know on average what's going to, what we're going to spend, and we take that and amortize over a period of time. For emergency response vehicles, so could be a fire brush truck, or it could, the only thing, by the way, the only thing we don't touch is actual fire apparatuses, so actual fire trucks themselves, or ambulances. Outside of that, brush trucks and the tan vehicles, all the cruisers, PD vehicles, those sort of things, we deal with those, those vehicles as well. So any of those that are considered that can technically blow through a light, they set them up as a page you go, type program, so the vehicle goes into shop somewhere, shop bills us a hundred dollars, the city sees that tax due on their monthly statement. So basically what we're doing, all, all the vehicles go out to the city, every time we go to the shop, consolidating that whole expense, and we're also automating while they're reporting. So the city no longer has to necessarily build any reporting as it relates to the vehicle. We're handling all that, we're doing oversight, and every year, we're giving an update for the city as far as, hey, here's what we spent last year, here's what we expect to spend next year going forward, here's where we can save, save some money, and then be able to keep this as a sustainable plan as we, as we possibly can. We currently have-
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
What's, I didn't hear anything on that, what is this?
So that right there is just the, the average, how we, where we save money by, so we have a hundred and thirty-five ASCs served by technicians that work for Enterprise, and our corporate office is in St. Louis, so. And those, those technicians, part of their job is odd cost of labor, cost of parts, make sure the repair aligns with what's going on. And vehicles get kind of complicated nowadays, so if someone, a vehicle goes in a shop and the shop's like, this is a six-labor-hour job, if our tech knows it's a three-point-seven-five labor-hour job, they're going to negotiate with that shop and make sure that we're paying the right thing. Those are kind of the areas where we typically can reduce costs, one of those things is goodwill. So if there's a repair done outside of warranty, that was connected to a repair that was done during warranty, we can make that argument with, for the manufacturer, we, we're going to go to bat and say, hey, we, we need to step up and pay for this repair, because this is what, why. And we have some pretty good backup, make a pretty strong case. Enterprise is a family-owned company, we're a non-public trade business, we're also one of the largest families, one of the largest family-owned businesses in the world, and as well as we're the largest owner, operator, buyer, and seller of vehicles in the world today as, as a company. So we have a lot of, we have a lot of board when it comes. We are, we are Chevy, GM's number-one customer for, I've been at Enterprise for sixteen years, only company I've ever worked for, and we've been one of their largest purchasers since day one of the work for Enterprise, as long as I can remember. So we, we tend to have some, some pool when that comes up. So that answered your question, by the way.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
So in the city of Glade Wire, it looks like we have about twenty-two contracted shops within the city's limits already. And the main reason for that is because we all, outside of the city, we also have a lot of, could be oil and gas, or, you know, home health hospice companies. You see those home health hospice companies driving around, like their Hartway Hospice maybe, or At Home Health, or any of those, those are all clients of ours. And so we have to support, we also have rental car operations that now spread throughout the Texas, so we have to support those. That's why we have so many contracted shops, even, even out here where we're not currently doing business in the city of Glade Wire. We do, we already have shops in place, or the city has a shop it likes to use today, we can usually add them onto our program, but it's pretty rare that, especially a city like this, that we, that shop is not at least at seam low or equal, that one, that's sort of just a really, really small mom and pop, which is okay. And we have cities that only have one shop in the whole tax base, and we'll bring that shop on as a partner for us as well, so it just kind of depends. So technology is a big, big piece of what we do, is helping cities stay on top of what's going on with vehicles, through either mobile applications or web, web reporting. So knowing when recalls are coming, because recalls come down the pipe like every single week, there's something in that, and it's really, really difficult for any entity to stay on top of those, those recalls, a lot of them being safety recalls now, nowadays, which is a huge exposure for, for a city. Because if you have a safety recall not formed as an accident because of it, you're writing, writing checks, and that's, that can really impact a, a city significantly. It's part of staying on top of being notified, push out alerts, and cities saying, you've got a recall, let's get them, get them taken care of, and still drive anymore because they could potentially cause an accident. As well as push out maintenance or repair alerts, so the cities no longer have to track that. Our job is to push those maintenance or repair alerts out to the department heads, or to the drivers directly if they're assigned vehicles and they have a smartphone. Say, hey, you got a vehicle, you know, old change currently due, your old change is coming, or passed due, and so that they can give them the extra certificate of motivation they need to get vehicles in a shop and get them, get them maintained. And really taking, trying to take as much workload off the city as we possibly can, so that they can focus on what they do best, and we'll worry about the fleet, and we'll bring things to the city's attention as, as they occur. I mentioned for our website, right now, the city is collecting data, I know through the collection of data on the city's fleet, that if you're pulling data, can be a challenge at, at times, that we're going to really remove the city from having to ever do that again unless they really want to. So this is all man-hours we're talking about here. How about reducing man-hours, allowing the city to do more or less at the time, and pull that, that workload off the city's plate. All right, any questions, I'm going to kind of go through, I know this is going to be a small fan on that, I'm going to best up. So the city currently has roughly thirty-four vehicles in, in operation. There are, I recommend replacing twenty-one of those in the, in this current budget year, and I'm going to tell you how, how you're going to do, and how we've done similar things with other cities, such as, like a Windsboro, replacing eighteen, twenty-four vehicles this, this year. And, and part of that is leveraging resale value, equities out of in your existing fleet, as well as funding the vehicle in a proper way, and reducing your maintenance, repair, and fuel expense in a way that's going to, you know, impact the city, city budget. Now, there are about five vehicles on the fleet, in the fleet, that I don't recommend putting on any sort of replacement plan. One's a nineteen-fifty-one show vehicle of some sort, I don't know if you're replacing that one anytime soon. There's, there was a brush truck, which is one that I think, oh, looking for a skid unit for. That one, we might recommend bringing that one up into the replacement schedule of some sort, now we know you're getting a skid unit for it, because that's a lot of times where we're flipping chassis, and not, and then moving that skid unit between vehicles. Because if you just go invest that money into a skid unit, put it on to an old chassis, well, you still have this old, this old, whether it's two thousand and three or something like that, chassis that is going to have its own set of issues, not just what was going on in the back of, back of that vehicle. And so you're kind of putting a really nice piece of equipment on a very, very aged vehicle at this point, seventeen-year-old plus vehicle, that is going to end up causing issues that are going to be downline. So then you're going to get stuck making a decision around that. There's also, there's a crane truck, I think, in the mix in there, that, that's more of a wait-and-see, because those are a hundred thousand, two-hundred-thousand-dollar pieces of equipment, depends on what kind of reach and stuff it has. So I'd recommend, those are more of a, can't really necessarily put those on a replacement schedule, and the equipment on the back can't really flip, so recommend just kind of, those are a wait-and-see, and when it does bite the dust and the city makes a decision, how, how long, how much is utilized, do we need this in operation? Okay, now where do we get the money again, and then, so I'll take some, some of that as well. And there are a couple of vehicles that are just very, very aged, you know, we've got a couple of vehicle or two from the nineties, and some of those vehicles may or may not, they, they kind of scream spare to me, I don't know. Part beyond this, and what we do if the city decides to adopt this plan, is I'm going to work with the individual department heads to determine what vehicles you have, if we're going to replace it, what are we going to replace it with? So, and then, and then from there, we'll kind of rebuild all this. And so basically what we're, city be doing today, if they take action on this, is we're improving the plan about, showing you what's the cost of everything I'm talking about here. And then from there, I'll work with city management and various department heads to actually implement this, this program from there, as long as we're staying within the confines of the budget that I, that I'm presenting to you all. So, being said, I'm a, there's a lot of numbers here, I'm going to do my best to walk through it. One of the things I was having to do is try to create a baseline expense of what the city's spending on average today. And one thing is you're not really replacing vehicles, you haven't been replacing vehicles for a while, it's warm. It's, it's a little bit of a roller coaster replace bunch, and you don't replace any, and you hold off, and you replace, replace a bunch, and that's kind of how, which is atypical for most cities, by the way, it's nothing, nothing unique to, to Glade Wire. And so, but, because of that, I still got to try to create some baseline of this, what you spend on every year for your fleet. And some of this is based off your budget, some of this is based off of, not just historically what you've been doing. So based on the age of your fleet, city has, buys about two-point-eight vehicles every year, so just under three vehicles, if you look historically back, which-
Two-point-eight.
Two-point-eight, it's, it's, it's how the math-
Almost three.
Yeah, almost three, it's how the math works out, so I want to be true to math, I'm an analytics guy, so my job is to, is to break down those numbers. So the current, city currently has thirty-four, you know, vehicles in operation, they're all purchased, so average purchase expense hovering right around a hundred grand a year if you really look historically back, and, and going forward for what the city's doing, doing today. And you'll spend it every year sometimes, a little more, a little less. Maintenance budget's hovering just over about seventy, seventy thousand, fuel's right around seventy thousand as well. So the city's average budget is somewhere around two-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars a year. By the way, that is actually lower on average than what I see from most cities, because usually they're replacing a little bit more than this, if y'all aren't here, so it's usually slightly higher. Typically, we're going to say about ten thousand dollars a year for every vehicle in operations, the average cost, you know, obviously, y'all are trending well, well below that. So what we're, we're proposing here is replacing twenty-one of those thirty-four vehicles, that'll be ten remaining, so the ten remaining vehicles, you still got that nineteen-fifty-one vehicle, a couple of those vehicles I don't recommend putting on the replacement plan. And a couple of vehicles I think we could probably end up downsizing, just looking at the sheer age of those vehicles, that's one of the things we'll, we'll wait, we'll wait and see, or as we work through with the departments. So in the first year, so this is basically, this is running for a full twelve-months operation, about to start the cash flow implementation, this, implementing this, this fiscal year. But if we were, if this was going in place, you know, October one, we, we have, for the entire budget year, we have a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars in lease payments, we have about thirty-seven thousand dollars in upfront costs for equipping the vehicles, to be putting police equipment on, or whatever the vehicles actually need in operation. We expect the maintenance repair budget to drop to thirty-six thousand, we expect fuel to drop down to forty-nine thousand, we have sixty-three thousand dollars in equity from the existing fleet, as we sell those off, that go back into, back into the budget. So for the, for the first year, we spent two-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars in the first year to replace, excuse me, replace all twenty-one, twenty-one vehicles and maintain those, and as you see over here, over the course of, you know, the next few years, we, the next five years, we're eventually replace almost all, all the vehicles, except for those vehicles I recommend not putting into the replacement plan at all. So then, we roll into the cash flow of this. So this is, if we were to go, if in this year, so if we ordered, if we were to get this going today, we order vehicles, vehicles don't come in right away, they, they don't order from the factory, so it takes months for them to come in, again, have to fill in all that stuff. So I, I think we'd only have about two months of operation of these vehicles as they hit the ground in this current budget year. We still have thirty-seven thousand dollars in that, so as the vehicles deliver, if there's any upfront equipment costs for those vehicles, we bill that out to the city. We don't have about twenty-six thousand dollars in lease expense for this year, because I only expect about two, two months of operation, but we'd have sixty-three thousand dollars in equity from the existing fleet of vehicles. So in this year, it costs us fourteen hundred dollars to replace all twenty-one of those, those vehicles, because of the fact we have that, that equity that's coming back in to the city. Expecting maintenance and fuel to drop off, so I think for the city as a whole, to, I mean, from a budgetary standpoint, I think the city only spent about five grand extra this year to replace all twenty-one of those, those vehicles based on, that's what I can see in the data at my disposal. Then the following, following year, we replace, we have one more vehicle left for replacement. Then we have a full year of the actual lease expense, which would be a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, we'd have about thirty-five thousand dollars in equity for resale. That's a combination of the resale of that one unit, and also equity from the resale of some of the vehicles that we're turning every twelve months. So if you look here, the way we sustain this, is do resale, that's the key. This is very similar how Enterprise, our rental car brand operates its rental fleet, those vehicles we turn about every ten to eighteen months on, on average, and because that is the lowest point in time for us to turn those vehicles over. And it's similar, so every vehicle has its ideal holding period, so pickup trucks, they're about twelve, twenty-four months, you know, your normal pickup trucks, your, your sedans, S U Vs, that every twenty-four months, your flatbeds, those sort of things, you know, every about four years, your, your take, dump bodies, that sort of thing. PD vehicles and brush trucks, I'd say about every five years is the ideal cycle point for one, one of those. And then, and sometimes we will run those out a little bit longer on the, on the brush truck side of things, just depends on, because those are, those things go a thousand miles a year if they're lucky sometimes, so. They don't, they have really, really low mileage, sometimes we'll run those out a little bit longer as it, as it makes sense, but we found one thing with PD vehicles, about four to five years is the ideal cycle point for those. Not because they're trucking a ton of miles, but they idle so dang much. I mean, you got a vehicle that has, you know, seventy-five thousand miles on it, it's like a vehicle about three-hundred thousand miles on it with any other, any other vehicle out there, just because they're sitting there, they're idling, talking. Yeah, no, they're idling, they're doing what they do, hitting those hot spots that he's, he's looking for, and that's going to, that means they're, they're sitting out there, you know-
Did you remember that he's in charge of Remy Daws now?
Right, yeah, but we're going to get him a cage for the back of his, so he can put the Remy Daws back, back there. So, because of that, every vehicle, but this is a stable plan, putting all, all those vehicles on those cycle points that I, that I recommend, recommend recommended. So you can kind of see here the total acquisition outlay over the next, you know, just six years of operation, I laid this cash outlay to, and you can see the, the, where the maintenance repair expense of fuel goes, and then the total. So basically, the moral of the story is, based off of the city's spending on average, I think it's only going to cost the city about ten thousand dollars more over the next six budget, budget cycles, in order to replace all twenty-one, twenty-one vehicles. Eventually replace all, roughly twenty-nine over our, our next six years, and keep them new, and let them stay, stay new, and no longer get into a situation where we're running vehicles as long as we are. We're not in a situation having to make tough budgetary decisions, because it's really putting a long-term sustainable plan in place that maybe the city hasn't been able to do before. And it's real, it's really kind of like how everybody does their own personal budget, you don't, totally don't, if you need to play your electricity bill and plan for it, so this is about putting a long-term sustainable budget in place, you know, do this. You can kind of see the actual implications of all this happens.
Well, what's your policy? I mean, I see the projections there, and they, they look, they look very good, but let me ask you this, what happens if you, if you miss the mark? And instead of a five-thousand budget difference, it's a ten or fifteen-thousand budget difference? I mean, is that, does budget, does Enterprise come in and-
So there's certain things we do guarantee, certain things we don't. Part of this is based off, off resale, resale market moves, it has been closed. That being said, I'm pretty conservative when I do these numbers out here, we have a good idea, we sell enough vehicles every year, one-point-three million cars, we have a good idea on average of what a vehicle's going to sell for- We have a good idea on average of what a vehicle's gonna sell for. And we've been in this space for a very long time. One of my oldest clients is the city of Chicago, a little place up north. Has, has a few thousand vehicles in operation up, up there. We've been, they've been a client hours for sixteen, seventeen years, something, something of that nature. And, and we do have a long time, we have a very good track record in this space of being able to hit these numbers. And part of our job is every year is evaluate what's going on. If for some reason we don't, we're, we don't feel like we're gonna hit it, we're gonna dive deep and figure out why we're not gonna hit it. And it's gonna be, the only, the really, the big move there is, is resale. But like I said, that's the driving force behind all this. But in a day, our, we would feel pretty good about numbers we're gonna hit. Otherwise we wouldn't be putting them out here in public settings.
So, so what, what do you guys do when, when you don't miss the mark?
When we, when we miss.
Community, or city that agrees to this?
When the city misses, misses the mark, if we're missing the mark on resale or something like that, there's usually a good reason behind it. There's something, some outstanding, like a accident or something of that nature. Or, hey, you know, when there's an oil and gas downturn, you know, like there is today? And there's trucks inflect, inflicting into the market? Some of our advice would be that let's hold some trucks a little bit longer. If we think we're gonna miss mark for some reason, and it's because of an outside influence. Then we're gonna say, okay, we don't, let's don't cycle this one now. Let's, let's move this cycle out a little bit further. That's part of our job is, this, city's gonna spend this money. And it's all about how we spend it, how we make sure that we maintain this, these budgetary numbers that we're, that we're putting out there.
And in a, and in a case like that, you expect you're up to on maintenance.
Yeah, so you're, you're squeeze, anything, anything, city's squeezing up the running back. So, if you make the decision not to replace, you ultimately, you're just gonna be a fat somewhere else that, that you may or may not have any control over. And so our job is to, is clearly implement this. And every year, we're gonna come and say, are these vehicles recommended city replacing? Here's why we recommend replacing, here's the financial impact as compared to what originally projected. If it's higher, okay, here, here's some things we can do to make sure we do hit it. Uh, could be holding these vehicles longer, could be cycling some, some of these vehicles out sooner that are doing well in the market. But, I mean, our, our job is, we're not looking for one-year partnerships, we're looking for thirty-year partnerships, you know, with, with cities. And we weren't hitting these marks, and we probably went ahead.
You mentioned earlier that, uh, that these numbers do include the cost of equipping police vehicles. So you're familiar with?
Yeah, we're extremely familiar with them. So now, we use the average number of what most cities spend around here. And also the city, the police department's gonna determine what, what equipment they want. We'll easily work with whoever, whatever vendors they're currently using today. So if you're using a, you know, a guy that's, somebody from Inter County or Defender or, you know, any of those. Or Cat Fleet or whoever that the city's using, we'll, we'll piggyback off that and use, use that. Unless for some reason we feel like they're not getting the best deal, we might recommend you look somewhere else. But other than that, we try not to disrupt that, that, that relationship at all if we can help it.
City more of the Defender supply or something. And, and looking at these vehicles, have you had a chance to visit with a different department head?
No, Prince Morgan, again, I, I've built a life-to-life replacement essentially of what the city has doing, doing today. And then, I mean, there's really two main vehicles and easy side things that they, that they use. Uh, one, one of that is, you know, Tahos are the, are the Explorer utility vehicles. Each, each police department has its own, uh, I guess liking or disliking for one of those two. So, they probably have a similar holding cost. Now that they're doing redesign of the Tahoe right now, so we'll see how that, see how that goes. But, um, on that, so far beyond here, if y'all say, yes, we wanna adopt this plan, I'm gonna get with each department head and say, okay. This vehicle exists, if it's on the replacements plan for this year, what are we gonna replace it with? And making sure, cause I guarantee those vehicles are bought twenty years ago. They make good sense twenty years ago, but maybe don't make good sense today. So, um, I'm guessing that we can probably even fine tune this down. It's not typically why I see is, like, even with, um, with Windsor, using example, cause like, um, we came in about fourteen grand under. Just fiscal year budget, but after, after the council adopted, and they said, yes, we wanna do this. We, we went through, we fine tuned all those vehicles and found ways to cut costs in a bunch of different areas, so.
Do any of the chiefs have questions?
And, do you have a website where we can go and see what your basic equipment is?
No, cause we buy the vehicles specific for the city. So we don't really go say this is base equipment, this is not. Our job is we, we go out, we source the vehicles specific for the city. So if you're like, yeah, I wanna, uh, utility, a Ford utility, police utility vehicle, great, we'll go source that vehicle. And you say, okay, it needs this equipment on it, we'll go source that, that equipment. Uh, for the city based off of your spec, your specs, not our specs. Enterprise doesn't have specs. Our specs are what the city wants.
Perhaps we could, we could ask for, you know, allows, especially when people are, I mean, once he figures whatever their requirements are. You go in there and then that gives us so much more precise.
You know, know the most recent one you bought, do you remember how much y'all spent on, on equipment at all? You want to hear on the air? Okay, sorry.
Freaky one near your ears.
Yeah, no.
Most of us were.
I think the Ford Explorers were.
I remember at the Ford Explorer, I think they were about twenty-four thousand each. Yeah. Eighteen grand, so I think the typical car, the vehicle itself is running about twenty-eight, thirty-two, somewhere between.
Well, I'll tell you that, I would budget way more than that.
And there's about twenty thousand dollars on, on the, uh, the equipment. Uh, when the car was twenty-five thousand, when we got during government bonders during that time.
Yeah, yeah.
And dollars were cheap, um, we bought those at twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
And we had almost twenty in equipment, uh, with cameras and everything else, but sometimes a little bit more.
Yeah, a lot of that stuff, we're trying, some of that stuff can be transferred. Yeah, a lot of times you can transfer, especially as you turn these things over a little more regular. A lot of that equipment, and that's one thing that's not in here, is transferability of equipment either. So one of the things was like, even like a flatbed or something like that, a lot of times that can be swapped between chassis, right? So, you know, I've been here replacing those, that equipment every single time. But a lot of times we're not necessarily having to do that. Cause, um, as you turn vehicles over sooner, your equipment's newer, so it can, it can go between a couple of vehicles. Or sometimes three vehicles at any given time, depending on what, what we're talking about here. So, basically, if the city agrees to the plan here, then only time we'd be coming back to council would be, um, if some reason. After meeting with all the department heads, we weren't, we weren't gonna be able to hit these numbers. And we'd be coming back here and saying, okay, we're not hitting these numbers, here's, here's why. She pointed its face on the side of the vehicle, it costs a lot of money, you know, something, something like that.
That would be a deterrent.
No, you know, so, something, something just out of, out of the norm that we see. That was causing the cost of vehicles to go up, like plate recognition software and just kind of all kinds of stuff that, that can be, get very expensive at times. So, um, that'd be, that'd be the only reason, that's when we'd come back to council. If we were for some reason not gonna hit this number. So, not, the council's not gonna write in a blank check here, they're, a check that's basically saying that, that y'all agree to, to these numbers. And only time, and if we're not gonna hit them, we'll be, we'll be coming back here, you know, next month and saying, hey, here's what's going on. Here's why we're not gonna, we're, we're actually coming a little higher than what our, what I projected. Um, and then the council make a decision over there.
I will say, we used them, we used them for us in twelve, thirteen, fourteen. And the numbers that, that they told us, and, and we had different vehicles. The supervisors had to have toolboxes, fuel cells, all that. We had mechanics structured with cranes. And then we had the management vehicles, which were half tons. And I, I guess the part that, that impressed me the most was in fourteen, when everything went downhill. Well, we were still in this contract and they were able to resell the vehicles we had on lease. And we were out no money getting out of the contract. I mean, they, they did real good on the resale side. And the part that was saving us was the maintenance size, side, because our vehicles, we're putting a hundred thousand miles a year on these trucks. So, that we were, I mean, we were spending a ton of money. I mean, we, we, it, it gets expensive for, for the, the maintenance side of it on our side. But I will say that, and I'm not saying either way, but I'm saying their numbers were real close every year that they did this. They're real close, so.
Like this is what we had to have for, this, what his rec, this is our current fleet. We've worked, uh, for several months. Department heads and stuff giving me as accurate as we could on our fleet. Our ledger has not been kept up, so we pulled all these in. This is your current fleet that we have. And you can see the ones that he's put in here that he's not, um, adding in this, in this rotation. A couple of us, three of them at the bottom. Two of them is just because of age. The other one is, well, all these on the bottom are just for age. But, uh, the one that we kind of talked about a little bit is the four fifty, the second from the bottom. That is the little, uh, one-ton dump truck. And that was kind of the reason he pulled it out because of the expense of it. Because if you look up here in the top end of it, we actually have the six fifties in here, and that's your big dump truck. So our six-yard dump trucks, this is pulling them into this rotation as well. So.
Essentially, once the four fifty died, you just get, you just wouldn't replace it.
Correct. I would put a single dollar into that, into that thing of an oil changes. If I, just a little outside free, free advice there, just good.
Cause that, that, that particular truck, just keep the little history on that four fifty, was purchased from a county with over two hundred thousand miles on it. And we put a bet on it to make it into a dump truck. So, it is not fully functioning where.
Could be replaced by a legitimate dump truck.
Or, or I think actually replace, could replace some of the other two with new trucks and keep them new. Maybe we don't necessarily need that third one. It's actually not uncommon, we've seen some cities even consolidate, if they had five, five, six dump trucks, consolidate to like two. Really good working things that they're gonna stay, dear ones that they can handle. Everything's different, what their needs are, I mean, probably works, we're gonna have definitely, uh, lots. City's gonna have a hundred percent say in what we, what we, we do and what we, as far as what we replace with, with what. After y'all approve this, and only time we, again, we come back to you is if, for some reason after going, working with, with the departments. We found we need to get more vehicles initially. But, the reason there's twenty-one in the first year is cause y'all kind of kicked the can for a little, little while. And when you kick the can that long, unfortunately, we're playing catch-up in this first year. Eventually it all stabilized, because you, you know, I have these cycles on there, it's a move, it's constantly moving every year. Eventually the, the fleet, it kind of sinks and just gets, it sinks itself and stabilizes. And so we're not necessarily replacing twenty-one, we're not replacing twenty-one every three years. We're replacing all the pickup trucks every year maybe, and then some of the other ones until four years from now. And it's just, it varies, it varies a lot. This is, we're getting this as close to a science as we possibly can. There's a lot of moving parts that comes to operating fleets, fleets of vehicles. And vehicles are, can be very unpredictable at times, so that we're getting this. Uh, we feel like we have more data than you mouse in the world does, as a business. And so we feel pretty solid about the numbers that we're putting out.
So starting off, how long of a contract do you acquire?
Our contracts are actually open-ended. Yeah, they're open-ended, there's no, there's no term for it. I mean, every vehicle has its own schedule, kind of like, uh, its own individual finance. Like, you have two cars in your house and each one has its individual note. It's each vehicle has its own note. And so any one given time, the city decides it doesn't wanna replace a vehicle, you just keep amortizing that vehicle out until eventually it quote-unquote pays off.
And then the second question I have, I've never leased a vehicle, but what is the difference on insurance cost? Versus a lease versus purchase?
Same, as far as, as far as, because you're, there, there's, there's city assets. I mean, the city treats them just like it does any of its, of its owned vehicles it, it does today. And these are called, why they're called leases, all they are is finances at, at, in a day. Uh, a traditional lease thing for the dealership or something like that, they give X number of miles, X number of wear and tear. These are very different. So every vehicle, any given point in time over that term of that vehicle, there's a principal balance that's ticking down. A lease doesn't have a principal balance that's ticking in the same, same way. There's a, a value of in, a buyout value, or there's a residual value. If you have over mileage or more, then you have to pay for those penalties of. And these, this case, we live and die by resale. So, any given point in time, there's a principal balance and there's a market value to that vehicle. And as, as long as those two are, however those two work with each other is what impact the city is. So if the city drives less miles, it anticipates it, sells for more and more equity.
Oh, I just say that because there's a big difference in insurance on brand new vehicles up here. Which is, we've got an old fleet here.
Yeah, there could, there could be a.
To look at that prospect.
There could be a, there could be a cost to us, we were talking about newer, newer vehicles. And now, as far as how the, how TML looks at it, they, they look at it basically the same, same way they look at it. They're city assets. So the only thing, your liability should really, actually not, yeah, liability costs.
There will be actually an increase in this, cause some of these has kicked over the twenty-year frame. And TML does not put comprehensive on it. So some of them will have, there will be an increase due to the comprehensive coming back on board. But, um, liability side, we're the same.
And, and to clarify, the reason we were in a contract is because we were turning vehicles over so fast. I mean, we were getting a hundred thousand miles in eleven to twelve months and having to get another truck, so.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's common, especially in some.
We weren't making that many payments before we were turning that truck back in.
Yeah, and sometimes it was an oil and gas space. Yeah, sometimes in that, in that space, especially like pumper trucks, things like that, they run such crazy and all, creating all these well sites all over the place. And so they, it was a very, very different situation. Also, as different as a government entity, then it is a private entity.
I can tell you that from my experience, that has always been the thing that, that just really bothered us for so long. Was having no plan to replace vehicles. And when you put a, a fifteen, twenty thousand dollars of equipment in a patrol car, and it's kind of lasts twelve years. Uh, and it's gone, but yet the equipment's not any good. You have to change it out again, or you put, like I say, a five thousand dollar video camera system in a car that's already eight, uh, nine years old. At a hundred thousand miles, and it's not gonna last. You, you spend, it's just a waste of money, and it's always been that way. There's a, a town just south of us, they make money on their city trucks every year. They don't cost anything because they turn them so fast. You buy them cheaper at, at the government rate, and then you're selling them. And they're, they're getting, they were getting money back on a lot of them. So, uh, it was like, why can't we do that?
Yeah, it's just, it's just a very hard thing to plan for, I think, as a, as a city, really looking that far out can be challenging. And vehicles are the biggest unknowns, the biggest.
Guaranteeds either, it's a pretty flexible affair as far as.
It, it's very hard, hard.
And this was the, the reason I brought this for you, cause we've looked at these for several years now, we haven't replaced any. And to get in this, as you see this, this isn't a cheap deal when we're talking about this many vehicles. And we're already so far out, I mean, we already got leasing fire, we're fixing to put, you know, sixteen thousand dollars on the back of this one, ninety-three.
We're putting the clutch in it too. That's the eighth clutch that's going in that truck, that's gonna cost, I'll be broke, but my budget's gonna be broken.
Five thousand dollars budget difference, now my question coming, where's it gonna come out of the budget?
Well, and that's all on timing. I mean, we, first of all, we gotta make this, if we acknowledge this today, now the timing starts playing. We start getting with everybody, these truck, these vehicles made on, you see, it's only got two months that they make delivery in this year.
Right, but if it's the five thousand fifty-three, which is presented to us right now, where's that gonna come out of?
Hopefully, you have these other vehicles that are not taken.
You're in the selling?
Hopefully we'll be able to get those.
So if the hopefully does not work out, where is it gonna come out of the budget?
It would be a deserved deal, but look to next year, if we do all this, it's a twenty thousand dollar savings.
Yeah, listen, I'm, I'm for, I'm, so know where I'm at on this, I'm for it. But I wanna know where this difference, where it's gonna come out of the budget for this year. Okay, so how much has already come out of the reserves that we're gonna have to sit here and now tack on another five thousand dollars? Where are we at on reserves?
Eight thousand you just approved earlier this evening. I think that's it, because the.
So how much is left in there, do we know that? How much is left in reserves?
I don't know that off the top of my head, cause of the restricted that plays in there. I, I would need to do the, the math and see where you are on that. But, uh, the last time when we were working on that grant, we're required to keep two months operating in reserve. We were a little over four months, so we, we've got a little.
So there's still, and that's with the eight thousand or before that?
That was before the eight thousand.
Okay. So how much is a operational expense? How much did you have to keep in there for the two months?
Right out of a million dollars.
And, and I think what you're, what you're seeing, and I may be just thinking for me, is you've had two to three months to digest this. We're digesting this in the last ten minutes, so.
We've talked for a while, but actually this came out, um, Monday, Tuesday.
I'm for this, by the way. I mean, I'm just going over here and saying I'm for it. I just wanna know, do we have, if, if all of this other does not work out with selling them and getting the money. Where are we gonna sit here and pull the money from?
Five thousand dollars, I'm sure, out of everything that we got.
Since this is in every department, they would be. That's what I'm asking, are we gonna be able to find, okay. That's all I want.
I would go back to Councilman Bird's, uh, question about insurance.
Yeah, that could end up in a huge.
I can find that out when, when he comes back with, meeting the department heads and have an actual number, I can have that insurance number along with that.
Cause I think that.
Close TML.
Yeah, we're not the first city that's done this.
No, no, you're, you're not the first, you're about the hundred and twentieth.
Yeah, so, so the information regarding insurance and stuff is out there as well.
Yeah, I mean, actually, I don't hear, I hear the question every once in a while, probably like every tenth city I meet with. But as far as cities telling me, like, there's this huge swing, I can't say that's a trend I'm seeing, but obviously when we get the exact mix of vehicles back and, and she submit, and we submit the TML, then they'll tell us what the cost would be, and that, and that, and if that is going to impact this, then that's when we might have to come back to council at that point.
Yeah, let me let a question be asked.
I mean, I have a question, you know, uh, you said you're pretty accurate on your amounts. And they're, I mean, they're pretty similar to, you get to five years out, and then bam, the city's hit with another twenty-nine thousand in debt, I mean, that's.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a big, that's a big jump.
Yeah, well, it's good, it's good you also look at.
And you're not putting any cars either, so.
What's that?
And there's not buying any cars out here either.
Oh, no, they, they are, they're just not, that, see the top line right there, and they're, they're replacing, that's a replacement of the existing city vehicles. Now, we will be cycling some other, other vehicles, other places of the existing city.
That's why I have to do five, that's why I have to do five.
Right, yeah, the first year you got twenty-one, right?
Yeah, so part of those twenty-one will be in year five.
Right.
So.
No, not part of the.
We have some vehicles returning every twelve months, some vehicles returning every five, four or five years. So like all the PD vehicles this year, any PD vehicles we bought here will be being replaced in the, in this year. Any of the trucks that we have on tour at turn, they're replaced in this year.
Took that long to get them there?
What's that?
It's taken that long to get them there, I guess, or.
Well, no, because we're returning, returning PD cars about every five years, because the vehicles we're buying this fiscal year, we're not selling for five years down, down the line.
I'm just making, I mean, I just want the council to know that, you know, that's, that's a big hit in, in that fifth year.
Yeah, that's why we, we also build credits.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's why we look at long-term, not just necessarily.
All right, so, so I think, I think what we probably need to do is, um, is look at what you brought up about the insurance cost. Of course, we want to know about how, how good an estimation that number is, so we can be, we can vote to begin this process, right? So that you can get those numbers to us, right, and see how accurate your estimation is.
Well, I feel good about my, my numbers outside of the, the, as far as the.
The insurance cost.
The insurance cost is really the only, would be the biggest question mark, I think, that we might have, I feel pretty solid about what's going on here. I feel pretty solid about what, what's up here, unless something out of left field comes from the department meetings.
So what, what is your typical, so central uses, what is your typical, uh, insurance cost for a fleet this size? Do you know that?
No, I don't, I don't know, it's not me, because I, we don't really get involved in the insurance, because most, most cities use a TML or, you know, or some. Most, almost every city we work with uses TML, not only does it get to maybe grade in that, I know it.
I would say something towards the fact that the line of staff to start working with him to get us concrete numbers to come back.
Is that what you're looking for, or are you looking for a year today?
No, he wants to be approved today for this, and if it goes higher than this, he would come back to us. Um, the problem is, is that, you know, with us, we're responsible for a whole budget, so we do have to sit here and consider insurance cost, you know, those type of things, and it's hard for us to make a decision to go ahead and okay this if our insurance is going to.
You can put a limit, if the insurance is going to increase more than three percent, then it's a no, if it's under three percent, or you guys pick a number, then we can still go. That prevents you from having to, to wait if you wanted to.
Yeah, and that, and basically, in that scenario, which happens sometimes, is, you know, if it's going crest that three percent or lower number y'all, y'all put on it, then that's when the council will have to reevaluate or.
Well, let's, let's say monetary value of that three percent, what is, what is the, what is the three percent increase?
Cause we, I mean, I think most of us are, are go for this, but we do want to make sure we're being prudent and.
So why, why are you looking for an answer right this moment? Why could it not be more looked into and investigated and you come back next?
Great question, I, uh, I would, if we can approve it, and there's some vehicles, like, are, we're in a weird production time right now with the manufacturer production schedules, but there's a shutdown, um, plants and things like that, we're kind of a weird teeter point, like some, some of the pickup trucks, we need to kind of get ordering by the, this month sometime if we can. Otherwise, we're kind of pushed, kicking the can a little further because of production timelines with manufacturers. Yeah, so what was happening is, what was going, they're, they're basically cutting off order banks for, for vehicles for some of the pickup trucks. And we kind of got to get on there, and we're under a crunch to get them ordered, otherwise we're ordering twenty-twenty-one models, which is going to take a lot longer to implement, so. That, that's, but, I mean, I'll, I'll do whatever the city wants, I'm just, um.
I mean, what sort of timeframe would you require to visit with department heads?
I would take, I mean, as long as I talk to them like, in the next couple of days, and not, not, my side of it pretty quick, I, I'm pretty nimble when it comes to being able to.
Three percent is eight hundred and sixty-four dollars.
I'd be comfortable with that.
That was a lot smaller number than I thought.
I worry that it's going to be more than that.
But it is more than that, it's going to back to it, right?
Yes, yes, so that's the way y'all chose to work. Yeah, so if it's going to crest beyond this, or.
Could you, could you repeat the answer, because there was a question about why, why the sense of urgency to try and get you an answer now, or could you repeat what you said?
Yeah, for sure, so, um, there's a couple of main facts, though, the manufacturers when it comes to pickup trucks, they're cutting off order banks here for this month um, for the twenty-twenty model year, so which is going to force us, if we approve this in April, for instance, is we will be forced to either pull off dealer lots, which cost a little bit more money, it's more expensive typically to pull off a dealer lot and it's first order direct through the factory. So it, it impacts that, and, or, or forced to wait till the twenty-twenty-one model year opens up, which is probably in the, they won't start, production start landing in their six months plus. I'm guessing something of that nature, we don't exactly know because of plant shutdowns right now, so those are some reasons why I'd recommend the city may, I mean, at least adopting what's up, up here, with the caveat of if it's going to crest here or the three percent, then we would have to be, we'd come back next month and for the city to give a final approval for it. But nothing will ever be done without Ricky signing off on it, by the way, so, uh, all this would go. Yeah, Ricky would go, Ricky, Ricky, Ricky.
It's the three percent.
Yeah, Ricky, Ricky, Ricky has to approve everything that I do, we can't just go, I can't just go order vehicles without, you know, the city manager signing off on every single vehicle order that we have, and then me, if there's any cost variation, I have to bring, I have to bring that to the city. You don't want to prove this, you're not approving some, like, like.
And, and again, I want to bring this back to you, it's just, it wasn't, it really wasn't wanting to bring this to you to take and give money at this time. But when he brought it up the first time, because the first one is on old numbers, old vehicles, we'd already sold some. It looked much better than this one, actually, and I said, man, this is good, it's a good deal, so that's where our conversation started. Then we started, it'd been, like I said, probably three months, working, trying to get actual vehicles we got. And once we did that, he ran this out, like I said, it was Monday when he, he shipped this out, or I was to get just this, this page that most of you are looking at, this page. You know, and when you look at that, it's just kind of like, wow, there is no way we're going to replace some new guy.
Twenty-one cars for.
Well, even, even drop that back, send even two cars for the PD. You know, we haven't done history in three years, we haven't done history even by two cars, whether it's PD or anything. So this is where the scare factor came into me, as longer we go at this, the less value we're going to have. And this gets you up and moving into something that is affordable.
So we all like the numbers that we see right there.
Yeah.
What we're worried about is getting it with extra numbers. So if we say, those numbers we approved tonight, and if the numbers increase by any combination thereof of a thousand dollars, then it's.
Actually, if it goes anything above that, yes.
Anything at all above.
Anything above that.
The only thing that, that we would need to.
The TML, which is eight something, so.
Eight, yeah.
Some thousand bucks.
A thousand bucks.
Yeah, and sometimes if we're, we feel like we're, we know, we know we have vehicles we need to replace, and we feel like there's something that's caused us to go a thousand bucks over what we originally rejected. Sometimes we might, you know, move one vehicle out to the following, following year, so we make sure we hit the, that's always the strategy, you know, to, for, you know, a kind of a non-technically essential vehicle, you know, but something that could wait, we'll move that out, uh, a year, but, um, if that, if for some reason, you know, we get with the departments and there's something that I'm just not seeing that is unique to play water.
So to offset the budgets, because some of us may not be here on this council when this big sum comes up, the twenty-nine thousand, will everything be earmarked to make sure that every budget year, we're having money put back for it?
We're getting ready for that deal.
I will, I will put it in my, same with my amortization schedules with, with our existing fire truck and those things that are annual payments. I will have those in there so that they're in the budget from the beginning.
Very good, okay.
When you get these newer vehicles that cost you more on insurance, but you're spending two and three times the worth of the vehicle in maintenance, which we have done. I've done it and, and did not like doing it, but there was nothing you could do, you had to have the vehicle, you spent the entire, it's more than what the vehicle was worth when auctioned for and, and, and cost, and one particular vehicle was done three times, it was three times it was, had worked on it, it was twice, over what the, what it was worth. But you had to do it, you had no way to get rid of it, you know, or, or, you know, replace it, yeah, replace it, you couldn't replace it, have money, you know.
And I'll say this too, just think about today, like if the, if the city busts through its budget by ten thousand dollars on your maintenance and repair expense, you're going to spend it, like, does it go for council, it just, it just gets spent, and, and it comes from some, somewhere, and it's, and this is really getting it as fine-tuned as we, as we feel like we possibly can. The, the biggest, outside of the resale, I feel pretty solid about that, the biggest, the biggest guess we have in this is, I'm projecting out PD vehicle expense, that's only, that's one. We don't guarantee that maintenance cost, but I feel pretty solid about the numbers that.
Your resale value is based on months before the current situation we're in currently, right, with the world, with the whole virus?
Oh, no, so, so no, I, I.
And economic, economic shutdown, which is happening.
Yep, so we project, so when I do the resale numbers, by the way, I also project forward, um, additional mileage, things, things of that nature. Now, we haven't really seen a hit on the resale markets, as it, the only market that's taking a hit right now in terms of vehicle resale is, is pickup trucks in the oil and gas sector, which are semi-new, newer, less than four years old pickup trucks that are coming out of the oil space right now, because there's a little bit of a downturn going on right there, yeah.
But then again, if, if that, if what, uh, Councilwoman Byrd is saying, um, I mean, that would throw these numbers off to where you would have to come back anyways.
Yeah, it would, and we, we're seeing the resale market just take it, it's tanking where we don't expect. Now, we actually are expecting used cars to bolster a, a little bit, um, and the, the sell those that go up slightly for, for, we make, we put, we make a lot, I'm talking billions of dollars, we make into the, into knowing these numbers.